Well, I did that one this morning. So hoping it looks alright. Sounds alright.
I'll buy you lunch when you say tip your bartender. I might watch anyway. I'll bring you a bit with me, Dorian said. Ahead of Thanksgiving.
Manager, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna ask all the party to lead us in our devotion for this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's go to prayer for a Thanksgiving season. Heavenly Father, Creator of our universe, we come to you today in prayer during this Thanksgiving season. Lord, we are thankful to be servants of you and servants of the community that we represent. We pray that the decisions that we make today benefit our community and bestow blessings upon your children. We pray for peace among the tragedies that we see worldwide and here at home. We pray for comfort for those who need a family and a meal, not just for the season of Thanksgiving, but every day. We pray for comfort for those who have no bed. We pray for compromise and mutual understanding for peace. Peace, Lord, in this season in a divided community nationwide. Lord, life is short and we don't have much time to gladden the hearts of those who walk this way with us. So, Lord, let us be swift to love and make haste to be kind, for it is said that we are not just human beings having a spiritual experience. We are spiritual beings having a human experience. All this we pray in the name of God the Creator, Christ the Redeemer, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much, all the party. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, we thank you, of course, for being here with us. This is the continuation of what we have described as our budget event. Our budget event is not a day, it's a process. It starts off earlier in the year, or last year, with our budget team. Then communications with the city manager and budget staff, with city alderman and the mayor, should they choose to take advantage of it. That comes into the formulation of the city manager's recommended budget, which is presented at a budget retreat. The council has the opportunity then to respond to it. And from there, it is a very delicate ballet, if you will, of conversations and discussions, projections, and then ultimately the council adopts whatever is left from those conversations. City manager and staff have done a great job of presenting thus far. Because of the volume of dialogue, we expected that we would not be able to complete, and we did not. So today we'll complete that discussion. To that end, we also developed a parking, a budget retreat parking lot. As we discussed, would be the basis by which we would find ways to deeper dwell, delve, deeper dive into the things that council wanted more information on and wanted to discuss more. And so that parking lot is up there. And so after we complete the budget retreat discussion, then the city manager will lead us into some open discussion about some of the things that we've talked about, that you all wanted more information on. And he has city staff here for that, for that purpose. So with that being said, Mr. Manager, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
Mr. Attorney, good morning. Mr. clerk, good morning. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Good morning, Council, happy Thanksgiving. Great to be with you. Thank you for the very productive budget retreat that we had last Monday, a little over a week ago. I want to begin with just highlighting on the screen, we have our, our budget retreat parking lot, which we began on the retreat on Monday, we will continue today. And Hidaway is here and she'll be helping those copious notes as you have your parking lot items that you want us to respond to. We began the retreat with my message about the overarching goals and what we hope to achieve in FY twenty-six budget, which is themed securing our future. You heard from Assistant City Manager Young about how this budget is the first budget that's built out from the spokes of your strategic plan Savannah GPS. And then you've heard from all of our service center chiefs. One about the accomplishments or the work and the progress that was done over the last budget, what gaps we still have to fill in our operations there, and how they believe the FY twenty-six budget helps to advance in filling those gaps or advancing the work of Savannah GPS in those specific operations. Today, we're gonna focus on the budget framework. We're gonna go over the financial aspects and a financial overview from our CFO, David Maxwell. We're gonna end with a presentation on the capital budget, which you recall, our five-year capital plan is the largest that it's ever been in by a considerable amount. So we want to be able to understand all of the capital investments we're making throughout the city. So with that, I want to turn it over to our senior director for the Office of Management Budget and our interim community services chief, Melissa Carter, to go through our budget framework for the FY twenty-two proposed budget.
Good morning, everyone. I've been ready for our budget retreat part two today. As the slides are coming up, I'd like to remind council and those watching that the FY twenty-six proposed budget is built to achieve the goals of Savannah GPS and our strategic plan to ensure the security of our future. Each department and division within our government has developed an annual work plan connected directly to GPS goals and those objectives that align with those priorities. It's gonna set our course and this budget is that engine that will move us on that course through execution. It's taken a little bit to come up. It's still working. Great, thank you, Sancia. Alright, we all know that in Georgia, state law requires us to propose a balanced budget where revenues match our expenditures for all local governments, including the city of Savannah. So we're gonna share the funding allocations in this session today that our departments and divisions and operational units are gonna require to execute what we want, what we want to do to align with GPS and of course, ensure that those allocations are proposed in accordance with governmental accounting standards, as well as our financial policies, which in turn do support our priority goal of always being a high-performing government. So this is a summary snapshot of the proposed budget that if approved by council will serve as our accounting basis for revenue and expense activity for internal and external operations throughout next year. All of our, our all-funds budget is proposed at six hundred and fifty-six million dollars, with the general fund making roughly almost half of that at three hundred and eleven million dollars, which is our general operating fund. That general operating fund of three eleven will largely rely on property tax collections resulting from an eleven point seven four nine mileage rate, same as our, our adopted rate from a few months ago, to collect about a hundred and seventeen million in our top property taxes from our tax base. We are also proposing to increase headcount in this proposal overall to address key investments needed to support Savannah GPS. So as you are aware, the employee headcount is steadily increasing and being adjusted year over year, reflecting our organizational growth and expansion to get back to the basics. The proposed increase for twenty-six is one point nine one percent compared to twenty twenty-five, but it is modest, but significant. A major contributor to this one point nine one percent increase in headcount is attributed to our fire operations to bring on thirty new firefighters to support our new Hampstead facility, highlighting targeted staffing to support the city's new operational needs in that area of our jurisdiction. Now, we're hoping that our safer grant application that we are still waiting on, feedback from the federal government, will offset this, this additional headcount. However, we have not to date heard back from that application. And so we're still pending that. This proposal, though, includes the addition of those FTEs in addition to other operational needs within the jurisdiction. Now, for twenty-six, our total FTE headcount will be two thousand seven hundred and four point five two FTEs, which is a change from this current year. Citywide revenues, remember, we're bound by law to propose where equal, where we have equal revenues and expenditures to fund our annual budget across a multifaceted municipal corporation. So where revenue sources reflect the many lines of business that make up those city operations. So for twenty twenty-six, our total citywide revenue base is proposed at that six hundred fifty-six million dollar value, representing an increase of twenty point two million dollars, or three point two percent more than our twenty twenty-five current year revenue projections. Nearly every major revenue category is expected to show some growth when compared to twenty twenty-five. And our revenue sources are divided into the following categories that you see on the screen. So taxes will represent our largest stream of revenue for the city, totaling two hundred and sixty-six point one million dollars in the proposal, which is an increase of six point seven million dollars, or two point six percent over twenty twenty-five projections. This critical funding source, as our primary stream, will, will provide for aiding and supporting the city's operation, our maintenance, and debt service obligations, along with providing that stable foundation for sustaining long-term fiscal health. With a property tax rate of eleven dollars and seventy-five cents per one thousand of valuation, our property tax revenue is anticipated to be collected at one hundred seventeen point one million dollars in our revenue base for next year. Additional tax revenue includes sixty-five point five millions from our self-tax collection, forty-eight point four million from the general fund share of hotel motel occupancy taxes, and thirty-five point one million from taxes on alcoholic beverages, vehicle rentals, and other taxes as mandated. User, user fees will represent eight point one percent of the city's total revenue, and they are gonna be User fees will represent 8.1% of the city's total revenue, and they are going to be collected for specific non-enterprise services offered by the city, as well as our business activity revenues that are hopefully going to be generated through the enterprise fund operations at a rate of 27.6% of total revenue. These revenues will come from services where the city operates more like a business, including charging customers directly for services where the city will operate along those lines. Revenues in this category will include service payments, such as our residential, commercial, water, and sanitation rates, that David will go into in more detail following this presentation, as well as a new stormwater service utility that is also proposed at approximately $4 million in the 2026 budget plan. Interfund revenues will be funds transferred from one city fund to another city fund. These operating funds to internal service funds will represent both the cost of our annual services provided by our IT areas, as well as fleet management services and long-term asset management and replacement planning. Grant revenues will be derived primarily from our federal and state grant tranches and will total 4.1% of our 2026 budget proposal. Although some programs are ongoing or are renewable, many of our grant awards are, for one time, our startup investments, making this revenue source variable from year to year. Interest-earned revenues will come from our city investments and is budgeted to decrease slightly by 22.3% in 2026 compared to 2025, given the inherent volatility of investment returns. As we've been seeing, the city employs conservative budgeting practices to estimate this revenue annually, ensuring fiscal stability despite market fluctuations, and that's what we've included in this proposal. So other revenues will primarily consist of the distribution of our hotel motel and auto rental tax streams within the appropriate funds as required by the revenue ordinance. Now, as I stated in 2026, the city plans to spend approximately $656 million. Our chief operating fund, our most flexible fund, will be our general fund, and it will cover 47.5% of our operating costs and liabilities for next year. Overall increase is mainly due primarily to our personnel and compensation expenditures, which arise from the compensation management strategy that we'll go into further detail in. And including this personnel expense projection in '26 was based on key metrics, including the city's commitment to attract and retain top-notch talent. Cost of living adjustments are being provided in this proposal, as well as a general wage increase. And an evaluation of an employee's salary against the market using a comparative ratio methodology has also been ingrained into this budget plan. Our personnel services will represent 37.2% of city expenses, providing funding for those employee salaries, as well as a comprehensive benefits program for employees and their dependents. This category will increase $14.2 million, or 6% above our 2025 projected expenditures based on our analysis. Workforce recruitment and retention initiatives also include, as a part of this budget, a 2.7% cost of living adjustment for all employees effective January 1, 2026, with a projected cost of approximately $4.7 million. In addition to that, $2.5 million is also allocated for our uniformed public safety personnel on a compensation step plan, providing a 2.5% step increase, while all other employees will receive a 3% general wage increase effective July 1, 2026, to help maintain our market competitiveness. The pension fund contribution for 2026 will be $16.1 million, which is calculated also to keep the fund solvent and to ensure the city's continued ability to provide the earned benefit to our retirees and maintain the solvency of our fund. Special revenue fund expenditures will total $79.7 million for 2026. Our 2025 projections, as you see on the table, will include exceptional grant contributions to capital investments, such as the $2.2 million tranche dedicated to the Truman Linear Park Trail, temporarily raising expenditure slightly above trend while other funds remain relatively stable. Enterprise funds will notably reflect the proposed stormwater services fund that I mentioned earlier, which includes the contribution to the general fund supporting operational enhancements, such as two new Vector trucks and associated Vector truck crews, as well as capital investments in our neighborhood drainage improvements. Internal services fund expenditures are projected to increase by $4 million, or 7.9%, primarily driven by increased ITS, or Innovation and Technology Service overhead, due largely to increasing our annual licensure and maintenance costs for software and our technology, as well as personnel investments that are also proposed in this plan. The vehicle purchase fund is also a part of our internal service fund, and that is also increasing with an additional $2.6 million budgeted for 2026 vehicle purchases compared to 2025 projections, resulting from our both fleet additions and also replacement costs. So the citywide expenditures show a clear upward trajectory, primarily driven by personnel, services, and compensation costs, as well as our capital outlay and internal services. And so those are the things that we feel are going to be needed to align and meet those objectives and initiatives that are outlined in Savannah GPS throughout all departments and their work plans. So as we go forward, I want to then toggle down to our general fund, our most flexible operating fund. That's going to, as a reminder, that's going to equate to approximately 46.5% of our total all-funds budget. And so primarily, the money to support the general operations will come from our tax base. Next year, we are relying on $214 million specifically in collections from all tax revenue funding streams. The lion's share of that will be borne definitely by our property tax. Again, it is proposed at a rate of 11.749, followed by our sales taxes and other tax streams that flow into our city's general fund revenue portfolio. As you can see here, this diversification is required, as sales taxes can be quite unpredictable and volatile, as you can see from our '24 actuals, '25 projected, and '26 proposed, that we have little wiggle room between those actual collections. And so our proposed rate of collection is a conservative one, but one that we feel is necessary. About 69% of all annual revenues are from our tax base, which are property taxes, sales taxes, and other taxes. So just as a reminder, this budget is touting the lowest rate since 1987, which remains the same as our 2025 adopted rate, where a $1 mil equivalent is approximately $8.8 million. So using the diversified revenue base we just discussed, we are proposing to allocate 55% of our planned expenses to cover our growing workforce, along with our market-rate comparisons and benefit plans. And so our vacancy rates do remain high, and although there is a $12.5 million salary savings component as a part of this budget, we are remaining competitive with our salaries and hope to increase our retention rate in accordance with our Savannah GPS goals for next year. The general fund workforce alone will total $18.3 million more than the 2025 general fund projection for salaries, and approximately $579,000 of this increase in personnel expenses is for positions to be supported by the proposed stormwater utility. Outside services for 2026 are almost flat with 2025 projections at an increase of less than 1%. Due to rates being frozen for the next three years, our electricity costs are proposed at 3.5% increase compared to the 15.8% variance projected in 2025 compared to our 2024 actuals. The city does continue to invest in professional development overall, with budgets for travel, training, and memberships increased by 21.8%. And our internal service charges for IT, fleet, and sanitation, street cleaning, and recycling operations are also increasing by approximately 16% respectively, for a total variance of $4.2 million. As I mentioned earlier, personnel costs are our most significant expense driver across all of our operational funds, and our salary increases are going to be a primary driver for all three types of internal services that we've previously discussed. The annual software budget for 2026 is higher than 2025 projections by 18%, or nearly $1.3 million, primarily due to increases in existing Microsoft and Azure licensures. All right? In accepting the risk management umbrella contribution, our 2026 internal service expenditures are about 12% higher than 2025 projections, and this does not include the 16% or $1.7 million increase in cost to replace our fleet assets and accessories due to continuing fleet expansions. And so I know I ran through that quite steadily, but I wanted to provide you with all of the mechanics that are making up our general fund and all-funds framework and components that support the $656 million budget proposal that is being deliberated today.
Mayor, Council, let me ask how you'd like to proceed. We have three distinct presentations. I'm happy to take questions after each, or take questions in council directions after the presentations are through.
Oh, I think, you know, the three distinct, different presentations. I think, you know, if the council has any questions, let's go ahead and change them. So kind of keep it fresh. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Carter, thank you so much for the presentation, the thorough presentation. Could you go over just one more time? I wanted to make sure we catch it on increases to personnel, salary increases, and especially with regards to public safety. You know, I know that we've been talking about different initiatives, night differential, weekend incentives, otherwise, to help with recruitment and retention. Could you go over those, please?
Definitely. So the proposed budget does include a 2.7% cost of living adjustment, or COLA, if you will, for all employees, with an effective date of January 2026. That cost is built into the budget plan at $4.7 million to do that. And then we are also providing a $2.5 million adjustment for uniformed public safety personnel in accordance with our compensation step plan that will also be provided at the same time. And then in July 1 of 2026, we are hoping, are planning to provide a 3% general wage increase for employees to help maintain our market competitiveness.
On to that. So the biggest investments and drivers in personnel services for this budget is a 30 FTE addition to Savannah Fire, to staff new fire stations that are being built in New Hampstead and Western Growth areas. Over the last four years, our personnel growth, our compensation packages for public safety personnel, fire, and police have grown over 38% to match market and to keep our first responders pays competitive. Civilian salary growth over that time is at about 30%, so tracking the less than our public safety plans. The, so when you see that, you know, personnel has always been the driving factor in our expenditures for the budget, that continues to be the case. Last year, we did a class and comp plan. Council's direction was that we wanted to see all of our classifications to meet market or exceed them, and we were able to achieve that last year with an investment in that comp and class plan. We, in the previous year's budget, council had approved essentially a buy-down on that class and comp payment as well, where we brought everybody to the midpoint of their salary if they had been in the position, an equivalent of five years or more, in anticipation that our salaries were well under market and had been for a number of years. So all of that, you know, work, you'll see both when we talk about our personnel services growth, but when David Maxwell comes to talk about the finances and the growth and our contribution to the pension plan, is really all driven by our investments in the people power of the operation and making sure that we have competitive payments there. The difference that you'll see also, and I know the council's aware of this, in our public safety plans, there are linear step plans. And so our firefighters and our officers know that every year, they're progressing through their pay plan at a step, which is each step is 2.5% increase over the step before it. Our civilian pay plans, which is our unified pay plan and our managerial pay plan, are not step-based plans. They are range-based plans, meaning there's a minimum, there's a mid, and a maximum for each position. And so we achieve movement through those pay bands through what's called a general wage increase. Both plans, linear and the range plans, we propose a maintenance on those pay plans every year through a COLA, a cost of living adjustment, which is really an adjustment to the pay plans based on inflation. So we try to maintain those plans based on inflation. Public service move through the plan based on steps. Civilian and managerial move through their pay plans based on general wage increases.
Well, thank you for that breakdown. What I'd like to see ahead of adoption is a cost-benefit analysis specifically for night differential pay and Sunday pay for uniformed police officers. There's many night owls out there that enjoy working late hours, but many, if we're going to be in this arms race for public safety, which we're in right now, every municipality, every state agency, every federal agency, if we want to hire a full complement, then we have to be competitive on that end. And I know that the officers do pay attention to the neighboring localities, incentives that they offer, even if it's not within our region itself. There may be a federal or state agency that offers it. It's something that I know that I enjoyed as a police officer in the DC area back in the day, because I'm a dinosaur. But it's, even that 10% for night differential might make all the difference. But we have to evaluate, for council, I think we have to evaluate the cost and see how effective it could be.
Great points on that. We've been working with the police officers, the PVA, on, as well, on calculating night differential and different types of special pay categories, and we fully intend to implement those if we're able in FY '26, and we can provide council with the breakdown. One of the constraints we have there, and this is not a fun one to say, we have a, you know, we're in the middle of changing our enterprise system that's going to help us do timekeeping and payroll and kind of modernize that. Our current system is very difficult to calculate nighttime differential. So we're trying to solve that technical problem now so that we're able to effectively and accurately account for those payroll differences. But I think those are really great points, and we will provide council with the breakdown of what those costs would be and what we think the benefits to those would be as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meldr. I appreciate that. If you have any questions about that, check with our neighboring municipalities. They are doing night differential and seems to be a great recruitment and retention tool. Ms. Carter, I just want to make sure I understand this. So public safety is 2.5 step plan in fiscal year 2026, and then 2.7% COLA on top of that, right?
That's right. So the 2.7 COLA adjusts the entire plan.
Okay.
So every step in the plan will be adjusted 2.7% higher than it is.
Okay.
And then, of course, when you're a member in a linear plan, every year you take that step, right? So you get that, that's how you move through that plan, so you'll get that 2.5% increase as well as you step through the plan.
And then 3% general wage increase across civilian employees?
For the, yes, for the unified plan.
Thank you.
Just to remind council that in the proposed budget book, pages 70 and 71 will show you the increase and decreases in terms of staffing adjustments that are proposed in the plan. will show you the increase and decreases in terms of staffing adjustments that are proposed in the plan. Go ahead.
I mean, go ahead. Is anybody better do it? Let me go.
Y'all asked for this.
How many additional staff does?
We need to jump rope.
Talk to me about the vacancy rate for public safety officers.
So our vacancy rate for our public safety officers are hovering around fourteen percent. And we have not included a full fourteen percent vacancy rate assumption in this budget, but for twenty six. We've included a all workforce vacancy rate assumption of nine point five percent.
Have we hovered around fourteen point five percent for the entire year?
Yes.
For twenty five, but we approve the budget at one hundred percent staffing, right?
No, we, we incorporated a vacancy rate assumption in the twenty twenty five adopted budget as well. Just to recognize that all of our positions are not going to be filled all fifty two weeks of the year, that there is a attrition rate assumption that's built into this. You know, some people term it as, some will term it as a vacancy rate. We're, it's really the attrition rate. As people are going off of the roles as they near retire or find, you know, other employment, we're recognizing that into our budget plan to be conservative.
Beginning with the FY twenty two budget, we began a budget best practice of accounting for a vacancy rate. Prior to that, we did not account for a vacancy rate in our budget and would end up with a large surplus at the end of the year. So, so what we try to do is understand and account for a natural vacancy rate. That's going to happen in every organization. You're never going to have a year where you're a hundred percent full and you expend all of the personnel services that you budgeted for in terms of your authorized FTE count. So we bake in that vacancy rate, as Melissa says, nine percent citywide across all of our pay plans. And that allows us to put that vacancy rate towards other priorities in the budget as well. What we try to do is be as conservative, well, not as conservative as we can. We want to be balanced with the vacancy rate because personnel costs are a recurring cost and we need to be able to project that over the next several years. So the, so we don't want to get used to being able to have a vacancy rate that we put to other recurring costs because at one day, we really hope for that vacancy rate to be more around five percent, which would, which would indicate, you know, a more, you know, fully staffed police department, fully staffed city departments as well.
So we're not balancing the budget on accrued salary saving?
We are not balancing the, no, we have a, we have a projected vacancy rate that we project into our personnel services account.
Okay.
Alderman Bell, as you may recall, leave payouts when we have turnover and long-term staff were to retire or leave are not incorporated in the annual budget plan. So being conservative with our attrition, with that natural attrition rate, allows us a little bit of flexibility to meet those leave payout obligations. Again, those are hard to predict from year to year, which is another reason why we don't want to stifle operations and programs and services, but to leave a little bit of flexibility for those leave payouts to honor those obligations as they come.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Melissa. I hear you saying that the personnel would get a two point seven percent increase cost of living allowance, correct? Okay, what is the average? Because I hear a lot of people talking about, now, we talk about our police and firemen and all that and they're, we're trying to be competitive, but we also want to be competitive with our personnel. And I hear from the folk in sanitation quite often that when they get their cost of living allowances and what have you, that it's, it's pennies. It's actually nothing. It puts them in a higher tax bracket, but they don't see the funds in their, their checks. So let me ask you this. What is the average, the national average? Because two point seven, in my opinion, is very, very low. And I was speaking to some folk when we were in Utah that said their folk get like three, four, you know, sometimes five percent increase. So why are we so low? We want to be competitive across the board, not just with our police officers and our firemen, but we want to maintain our, our regular personnel as well.
You're absolutely right. Every jurisdiction is going to be in a different place. So, and we have to balance our cost of living adjustments and general wage increases with other budget priorities as well. So we talked specifically around, about sanitation. We made huge investments in those salaries last year as a result of the, the class and comp study. And I'm sure Jeff can text me the percentage increase over the salary. But the starting salaries for our sanitation workers were one of the highest increases across our classification yesterday, last year. It absolutely did, and we were very, very proud of that. So right now, we're very confident that all of our employees in all of our classifications, including sanitation workers, including maintenance workers, including our, you know, our very important frontline staff, are at or above market. So we did a, a large class and comp study last year. We do one every five years. We changed our peer set group last year, if you remember. We're looking at bigger peers now. We're, we're, we're comparing ourselves to Charlotte, to Atlanta, to Birmingham, to, to Nashville, to, to, to larger places, as well as, you know, the county and other, you know, surrounding areas as well. So we're very confident that all of our classifications meet or exceed market. What these cost of living adjustments do for this year, because we've made such big, big investments in the last two years to get to market, it, it maintains both the, the increases in inflation that we've seen this year as well as provides a general wage increase above that, right? So the two point seven percent, that's your COLA adjustment. That's us adjusting the whole plan based on inflationary pressure for the year, right?
And that occurs in January.
That occurs in January. Then mid-year, in the proposed budget, we've proposed a three percent general wage increase on top of that COLA, right? So all of our workers are going to see a two point seven increase in their pay beginning January one. And then beginning at the mid-year, they'll see another three percent increase on top of that. So a five point seven percent increase total over the next six months.
Okay. Ms. Carter?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you mentioned it since I came in a little late, but did we talk about SPOS funds? Is, is somebody else going to talk about that?
Sorry, I don't understand.
David's going to talk about SPOS.
Oh, good. All right. Thank you.
Only thing I would also add to that discussion is that, that two point seven percent of cost of living adjustment is based on the current CPI, Consumer Price Index. That was one of our, one of our factors to support that assumption being built into the budget. In prior years, that cost of living adjustment has hovered around two, two and a half percent. So this is both an increase on that base metric and also that additional three percent coming in July to give that total increase of five point seven.
It's two point seven percent in January. Why couldn't we take it to three percent in January and then three percent in midterm? I'm, I'm just.
We would just have to find offsetting reductions in the budget to be able to pay for a full year. We also don't believe that we're in need of it at this time, that the COLA adjustment accounts for that inflationary pressure. And as you recall, last year, we also did a, a bifurcated adjustment to budgets where we had an adjustment at the beginning of the year and another adjustment at the mid-year. So it's been something that we've typically been doing.
I would like to see, I don't know about anybody else in this council, but I would like to see our personnel get a little bit more than what they're getting in terms of increase.
So we can certainly calculate what a, an annualized three, three percent adjustment would be versus a six month adjustment on a general wage increase.
Yes, I think, keep in mind, of course, wherever we, where the money comes from has to be cut somewhere else. I think the other issue that is not lifted when we talk about particularly folks in those jurisdictions is that we look at, people look at pay, but it's all, it's really a larger compensation package. We're probably throwing in there thirty percent for benefits. The city of Savannah provides throughout, fortunately, too, thank you, for our employees, that many of those items are either at no cost or at a reduced cost or cost by the city of Savannah. So that's also, you know, I think you sit out a statement every year kind of talking about the down of those non-salary opportunities that really talk about compensation. We could always offer more money, but then, you know, if you're paying more for the benefits that you receive, then it's really not much nobody at all can participate in that, so I just wanted to let that.
I just want us to be.
No, Mr. Stewart, I'm saying.
We can.
Yeah, I mean, we can do anything council wants to do. You just have to be willing to make, to cut somewhere else.
We got Anselm on.
Mr. Leggett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, I think just to add on to what you've been saying, to allude to the question I have is how many additional staff does the personnel line represent? And also to that is for the additional recreation staff, for kids. Do we have any extra money or anything for, for, in personnel line for, just like our, 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 our media staff, people coming in during the summer or part-time people? Do we have money for those?
We do have money budgeted for our seasonal workforce, especially in recreation. You'll also remember that last year, we began an initiative to, to add to our FTE count in sanitation to be able to, to annualize some of those seasonal services. What we were finding were, we really liked the seasonal workforce, but there was a lot of need that we had throughout the year. And that some of our seasonal workforce, whether that be lifeguards, et cetera, could provide benefit to our programs year round.
So we had direct funding for our seasonal employees?
Yes, we did.
They're not shown in all of those areas as an FTE. They come through different tranches in the budget plan. Alderman and Leggett, that on page seventy one, you can kind of see that total year-over-year change in FTE count for those permanent authorized funding. However, in divisions such as recreation, sanitation, we may also see it in the ones office division as well, that we have additional funding in those tranches as dollars because we're not bringing them on as permanent authorized FTEs and paying them benefits.
And usually, Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, when we, when we have contracted staff, meaning non-FTEs, that's coming out of the outside services fund type.
Correct.
Not the personnel services fund type.
So which, where would that be shown? Who said outside services?
Outside services will, will, will show within those department pages in your, in your, in your book in the instance of the ones office, that would be an outside service allocation in your book as well. So everywhere you would see the funds table, wherever it says outside services and a total, it's listed as out, as outside services throughout the book.
Ones itself is an outside service?
No, it is not. So if you, if everybody wants to turn to like page one eighty nine and we'll use recreation and leisure as an example. So you'll see the, the, this is recreations and leisure departmental budget. If you look at the, kind of the, the middle chart there, which says expenditure by type, you'll see the breakdown. So you'll, you'll see along the left-hand side, personnel services, outside services, commodities, internal services, capital outlay, inter-fund transfer and other expenses. Those are our major expenditure types and those are uniform across all of our different funds and departmental budgets. So you'll see in rec and leisure on the personnel services that the proposed personnel service cost for recreation and leisure is eleven point three nine million dollars. You'll see in the next expenditure type is outside services at one point four six million.
But it'll, it'll match. It, it don't, it don't match for me when we talking about the inside services and expenditures and how it come out. It actually don't match for me when we was talking about how many FTEs we have. It really, it don't match for me, Mr. City Manager. I, I don't, we talking about the type of money that we are, that we are proposing for these, for these departments. And we're looking at, what you want us to see, the expenditures and, and by division and how money is allocated and coming out. It don't, it don't look, it don't look like, it don't match with the money we are, we're trying to give them. It don't match the services.
I don't, I don't, can you?
Well, what I'm saying is.
We're not getting a return on our services for the amount of money that we got. And if I might ask.
Hold on, let me finish this, this point real quick. So we have, we have a, a overlay of how many employees we have throughout the year. So this is telling us, this actually speaks to how many seasonal employees we have also. And this also talks about.
It talks, it, it shows, it shows what we're funding. On the next page, you can see all of the authorized full-time positions and the FTE headcount for that particular department, which in this case is.
And that's what I was talking about. It doesn't reflect. So I'm thinking, we can even go around the table, we, we take a poll. All of these different positions doesn't reflect all of, when you go to the community centers or you ask what's going on in recreation, it does not reflect for me.
It doesn't reflect what's.
It doesn't, the service.
So we have a.
I'm, I'm just saying, it doesn't, it really doesn't reflect for me personally. You know, we have all of these, all of this type of money that we pouring into these departments. And we say we have, we still looking for people. We have some FTEs out there and we have all of these folks in twenty twenty six that we want to put there. But we don't see, it doesn't reflect for me. It doesn't, it really doesn't. I mean, we, we have to deep dive into it and find out from, from position to position. I know it's probably going to be redundant to do it, but I just want to make sure that we are actually paying the money to, for the positions that we've been asking for. I mean, I want our recreation department to thrive, but we want it to thrive and put the right people in there and have people there and don't have our community centers just, just open and not having a program to represent what we paying into it.
So if you want to do that deep dive and help me better understand the concerns of how we can make a better return on investment in our rec and leisure services. So let me tie two things together for you and then we can.
I mean, it's not just rec and leisure services. I mean, you actually, you touched on, you said the ones program also. And I, I really need to see, and we want to look into that also, how that program is actually doing the most because we putting a lot of money in it. We doing an investment now where we going to extend the ones footprint in the building itself. But I want to see that program really do something in the community. I was at a turkey drive yesterday. I didn't see one, one person. You know, I want to make sure that their outreach is really touching. Our young people are touching the, the, the crime aspects that's happening in the community. And again, Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure that we, we very clear that our investment really have to show what we pouring into it.
I think the budget also puts out performance outcomes that we knew from the beginning that ones would be because of the population somewhat difficult. I mean, for me, I've seen some of those, again, I think we can lift the performance outcomes. I saw this year in interactive, where almost twenty young men who were either criminally engaged or criminally minded who swore that they would never touch a gun again in offense. To me, that is well beyond anything that we could ever, and this is, I think, all summer staff engaging with them.
You got another pain.
And, you know, for me, if that's twenty lives that we have been able to save from these young men turning their lives around, for me personally, that's well worth it. This is kind of new ground for us. We don't expect that the outcomes would be immediate. It's really about relationship building. And so I think that's what the challenge of this manager, you know, to how do we, and I think across the country. Um, and so I think that's what the challenge of this manager, um, you know, to how do we, and I think across the country, you still see those types of, of intervention programs, obviously having very big yield, but they have very significant yields in terms of people are able to reach, so.
I would, I would describe that the policy around upstream, non-police violence intervention as a, as a deep impact program, right? So that's, um, that's very targeted, um, in terms of who we're wanting to serve. Um, a, a, a low volume because of that and a very, very deep investment in those particular individuals. Um, versus other programs that we have in rec and leisure, which cast a much wider net, um, and has availability for many, many different, um, uh, members of our community. Um, and, uh, i- is, is not as, while it's intentional, it's not as intentional in the ones offices being a, a violence disruptor and a violence interrupter. So these are two different policies. I'm happy to, I mean, yeah, I mean.
But let me, let me be, be pretty clear on, uh, when I'm, what I'm saying, the, last week, when, uh, when they got up here, they said that the ones offices was designed to, um, be a portion that that police connected, that young people don't have to really too much deal with or they're afraid of to have the interaction with the police. But the people that were outside yesterday were all police, interacting with the community, I mean, at all ages at every step.
And we want our, we want our police to interact with every age of our.
No, but what I'm saying is the, the police were doing more of the footwork in the community and creating relationships with the community. Young people actually helping, um, and they had young people who was helping, uh, our seniors put their, uh, their groceries in the cars.
Yeah.
At ones. Yeah, but the, but what I'm saying is the ones office wasn't there. I didn't see the ones interacting out there. I saw the SIPs out there yesterday. And this is, this is my question to the mayor and the city manager, you know.
Well, my, my answer to that would be this. If we want, if we want the ones office to be at every community event, to be, um, just a, a general engagement office, if we want, if that's the policy, if we want to see them at turkey giveaways.
No, it's, it's not even about the turkey giveaway. They need to be more visible in the community being, if it was something that happened in the community, it was something very, very crazy. And they needed to get someplace where they trusted, uh, the agency. When you go to the ones office, you knock on the door, you just gonna knock on the door to show your mirror image. But when you go to the ones office, there's somebody there. I'm not, not just targeting them, I'm making sure that you understand that our police are out there creating relationships with our young people.
Yes.
Especially through our pals program and those type of programs, and they have shown some significant strides. But we want to make sure that we dumping this type of funding into agencies that almost mirror each other. Now we have SIPs that's overtaking what we pour into, uh, in the ones. I would like to see some reallocation of funds going towards that, that area if we could, because they have shown yesterday that they, they fed a thousand families, they made, uh, so many different relationships. And they show young people how to take care of old people in one setting, in one parking lot where you have two agencies.
Um, well, if, if council would like to reallocate funds to support SIPs, um, uh, I can, we can provide a, what the, um, what that cost benefit would be and what we would lose on the one side. I, I hear you, and I just want to like.
I want, because I wanted to say it because for that community in which we all grew up in, it's a food desert. And the support that's needed in that community, not only through a, a grocery, uh, distribution, but a, a good holistic approach to the entire community from, uh, from somewhere that we, we put a lot of dollars in that facility and it's a, 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 a big investment there. And we are also gonna do some great things moving forward, and it's gonna be something good for the entire community. But if we don't have our programs that work with each other, we just basically looking towards silos for each and every dollar we send.
Um, I, I, the reports that I'm receiving are that our ones office and our police department are working very, very well together. Um, uh, but I.
To the extent that they should, because I think, you know, I think that's part of the reason why you have some separation between them.
Sure, but I, in terms of, I think, when I think of redundancy, I think of, um, two different agencies doing the same thing. Um, but I, if we can, we can talk through, because there's a few investments that we do on the neighborhood and safety engagement side. One is the staff, uh, yes. Um, the other are the grants that we put out in the communities through the, um, through the neighborhood safety grant program, um, and those are to nonprofits that are, um, out supporting the mission of neighborhood safety, which is violence reduction. Um, so we can, we can talk through what those budgets are and we can turn to those pages if you'd like, or we can put it in a.
We can put it in a parking lot, we gotta go.
Um, I, I like to think of it as being, and I mean, I think you might be talking district, I'm, I look at citywide. You know, there's the difference between net fishing and sport fishing. Um, SIP to me is like net fishing. I mean, it's a much, like you said, bigger yield. Um, for ones, we're looking at very specific fish. And I think that is where their, their efforts have been targeted. I saw Alderman Bell. Kara? Raise your hand.
What was that? Um, I don't know. I know, girl.
That's fair.
Oh, I know Melissa back, the structure, that's all I'm still concerned. Back to where we started. Um, so outside services for any cost center is the additional, not the permanent FTEs, um, but.
Contracted labor is incorporated.
See, you know, I have to realize, I'm from the old days like Martha, where we used to remember for one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, personal service, the track to monitor, yeah, but this one is added.
We're summarizing, um, we summarize, so the line item, you're right, you're correct. The line item is in the detail, but we do summarize it by major category for ease of, uh, readership.
But now there are other, there are other, in outside services, that's not just contracted labor.
Okay, so it's.
Any outside service that might be, um, funded by that agency. So whether that's a, um, a, a, a contract that they service, like for instance, a, you know, the, a, a lawn care, you know, contract that we might have, that's also gonna be in those outside services.
To Alderman and Leggett, I mean, I think, you know, some, I think it's in the, uh, proposed budget, the outcomes for both programs. Um, just lift the hand up for his benefit. I think yesterday, ones was doing a, like a taco and taz type of event in West Savannah, um, yesterday, um, with, with a group of young men. I mean, again, you know, you have limited staff, you have to be very, very specific about who is you're targeting. Again, not necessarily larger events, but like small, low-end events, uh, character building events. Alderman? Alderman?
Are you saying your name?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I want to just touch back on to, okay, so a lot of, uh, the council members on this, uh, administration is here because we were very visible about crime. And so one of the things that ones was specifically supposed to do is be responsive and in the community when these type of things happen. And so we fell back because ones was supposed to be having conversations when these traumatic things happen in our community. Uh, we would meet people at the hospitals or wear, uh, boots on the ground, whatever you want to say. I'm not seeing that. And that's why I voted for ones to do this. If it says, uh, they're supposed to be utilizing a trauma responsive healing center and equity-based approach. One of the approaches is that we wanted somebody to be, uh, to be there with these mothers and get information. Because a lot of times when these things happen, we get this information that actually solves cases. To not see them and to not be, uh, I mean, we were getting out of our beds every time something happened. And so I was under impression that y'all say y'all keeping this separate. Uh, what is the purpose of having ones if the most fundamental thing, excuse me, sir, the most fundamental thing is to do for them to be out there when these type of things happen so that they can garner this information, that people are more freely to talk when these things happen. I've been to some of these things and I've not seen them there in the night and, and the evening, and I don't want to be out there if I don't have to be out there. Now, I have eighteen years of law enforcement, I know not to cross the lines, and they tell Dietrich, you don't need to be here, but he's being there when we are paying somebody to be there. And so what he's trying to say, and I can't say it for him, but I'm saying it for myself. If y'all gonna keep these things separate like y'all say, and we're talking about officer-friendly, why wouldn't we invest more money? Because at the SIPs event, you see all these officers out there, but y'all saying ones is not supposed to be represented because you're gonna keep them separate. But then right here, it says we supposed to create city a- agencies to co-create and neighborhood residents. That's not happening right now. We can put this stuff on the paper, and if we want this to happen, then we have to hold people accountability. And that's all we trying to do, hold people accountable. So we, we, we introduced the neighborhood safety and engagement, and we're saying that they should be separate because statistics have showed us. Well, statistics showed me that we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We, we need to have as many partnerships as we can. This administration, we keep saying that we don't want to work in silos, and that's what in fact is happening. You are intentionally saying that we trying to keep two departments that fundamentally should be working together because of what the nation's, uh, protocol has said is the best practice. The best practice for me and most of the people here is things that work, not what's on paper. And so let's get back to, if, if we can change on my, um, uh, thing, we, the most important aspect, I feel like that's gonna save our children is recreation. And in this book, there's only two pages in recreation, two pages, two pages. And so I want to ask a question, this therapeutic recreation, what kind of, what kind of programs do you have that actually works with disabilities? We, we're giving somebody four hundred thirty-seven dollars and I, uh, uh, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and I don't see.
That's for the, that's for the program, not for somebody. That's for the.
No, that's what I'm saying. What kind of program do you have? I just said somebody, but I initially said, what kind of program do you have that intentionally is for disabilities? What kind of recreations do you have in these centers? Because I'm at the park all the time, and I know we have kids with disabilities over there. I don't know. Uh, do you have one at W W O, Moses Jackson?
Delaware.
Delaware?
The therapeutic, uh, recreation program is actually very unique. It's the only one in the state, uh, that's provided. We get referrals to it. So we have, uh, young, they serve young people and adults. Um, it is throughout the day. We have a team of about, I think it's three or four people that work at Delaware, so their entire program is provided there. Um, they also have an annual event, I think, that you might have seen a notice for, um, but it's in a very involved, they go to Special Olympics, they work with, um, uh, I.
Mm-hmm, all right, I, I'm seeing.
Our lady, uh, we, we need to all be one at a time. And also, uh, please keep in mind, uh, we have these table mics that are picking up whatever we're pushing doing.
If I had a child with disability and I wanted them to be involved with any of these recreation, how are we getting that into the community? Because I, I try to be hands-on of this stuff, I don't know anything about it. And so if I don't know anything about it, I know we have these events, but we have all kind of events. It doesn't say that we have a, a program to match and is in parity with that event. And I just asked you what program it was, and you say we have all kind of programs. I'm like, tell me one that you're doing. She said Delaware, what program? Just one. What are you doing that's gonna enhance, uh, recreation ability for our kids who have disabilities?
We have a fully encompassed therapeutic recreation program, is it?
Entail. People are listening.
No, it provides programs to, uh, a population of young people and adults. Um, they engage in recreation activities, they take trips, they go bowling. They, they're, they participate in a wide variety of activities. I can certainly get you a report so you can see how many people are served and what all the activities are. It's a year-round program.
Okay.
But you're right, it's in one particular location, it's not spread out at all to the centers, so you would not see it everywhere. Um, they provide transportation, um, they take you to Atlanta. Um, it's similar to your regular recreation program, except for the population that needs, has special needs. Yeah, yeah. But it's a fully encompassed program, and I could certainly get you more information. I know you have a lot, uh, to cover, um, but I'd be happy to share that with you because it's actually a, a, a pretty stellar program. Um, and like I said, it's the only one of its kind where a recreation department would actually provide that with specially trained staff. Um, but I'll get you all of the information so that you'll be able to see that.
I just, if we have these things available and they realize the problem, we have these things available, and then our listening body, they don't know, you know? So if they do know, that's great.
Well, and that's an area that I take and receive from you, and maybe we probably need to do better there to make sure that the population and everybody is aware of all of the programs that we have.
There's always, I'm not beating you up, there's always an opportunity to do that. Ms. Carter, this is for you.
I've been looking at these, uh, how are we gonna disperse, um, and had a question. And so I asked one of your, um, people who are responsible for, um, these pro, uh, the budgets and how they're allocated. And so when I asked about a particular one, uh, I was told that the funding did not come from out of our, our budget, but it came from out of ones. And so how is that? We give ones money and then they give money to particular, uh, uh, agencies that they want to give their money out of their budget? I don't understand that.
As I said, we have a, we have a grant program through the ones office, um, that was set up by council in, I believe, twenty-twenty-three. Um, and you can see those organizations listed. It's very similar to the grant program we do for, um, C P T or for our ACE programs. Um, but the, the mission is more specific around violence interruption and violence disruption. Um, so I'm trying to get to the.
I said, I only had one question. I, I mean, I, I know we approved, um, Mr..
Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to get you to the major.
Just one question. We have a budget, we give them money, and then they give money out of their budget. That's simple.
Yes, yes, ma'am, it's a grant program.
Uh, this, this year, so far this year, we've engaged seven hundred youth through our violence reduction grant program. Um, we're proposing to continue that in twenty-twenty-six.
You can see the proposed agency, um, that, that violence reduction grant program, as Melissa said, begins on page two sixty-four, um, and, and ends on page two sixty-nine.
Yes, sir, I, I, I get that, but you.
If I might add one more comment about the officer safety and engagement. Uh, one of the reasons when you see an incident that, that happens in the street and the police respond to it, the police notify the ones office and the staff, our, uh, rapid response team intervenes according to what that conversation is. So many times when there's an incident, PD is not looking for ones to be at the actual incident site. In fact, when we had staff showing up there, it created a little bit of confusion because they were busy trying to talk to people on-site to calm down what was happening. Just, if you could allow me just to, um, uh, finish that thought, while also PD was trying to respond. So that was a conversation we had. We put together a written protocol for how they will respond, where ones engages, it, they engage at the hospital level. We have a partner within the hospital, so that is generally where they are sent. In the course of this year, they've responded to fifty-four incidents. Twenty-four were hospital-based, twenty-three referrals came from the police department, we had three incidents at the school system. Through those, uh, referrals and also through parents that have responded, that there's issues going on between their child and another, uh, childhood friend. Um, they engage with eighty-nine persons. Sixty-six of those individuals accepted assistance, they're still working with sixty-five, and they've only had two to re-engage in violence. Right now, their case management, um, they are dealing with thirty-nine cases that they're carrying between Path Forward, Department of Juvenile Justice, from the juvenile court referrals, adult probation, they have four. Um, and right now, let's see, it's active now, is thirty-one of those participants, eight have gone inactive. And usually when they're inactive, they're going back behind those. They do have outward-facing events, they participate and piggyback on quite a few events. They do quite a bit with SIP, and they do quite a bit with the police department. But their primary focus is putting their hands on high-risk youth. Those are kids who are known to carry guns. The police may refer and say, I got two or three kids, you know, they're not people we're about to arrest, but we need you all to connect with them. So they're working with that very specific population and those families, so you may not see them as much. But if you need information about that and want to be able to verify what they're doing, um, they certainly are keeping those records, and we can get you, uh, that information. I want you to have confidence in, uh, in the program. We appreciate the scrutiny, we appreciate, I appreciate the scrutiny, but we can definitely get those numbers, um, so that you'll be able to respond to their reports.
Finish my train of thought, please.
Let them, they responding to you.
And I think she was finished, and then he interjected.
One thing, and also, like, because I'm, uh, you know, you and, and Alderman Leggett. One thing, and also, like, cause I'm, uh, you know, you and, and Alderman Leggett, um, and many members of council have a tremendous amount of knowledge. You respond to incidents, um, and you see what's happening on the ground. So that, like, when I, when I hear concerns, it, it raises, um, some concerns for me. What I'd love to be able to do as well is to invite you and Alderman Leggett, um, as appropriate to some events with ones. And so you can see kind of, so you can see what the current programming is, um, to better understand whether or not it's adding the value that, that council wants to see that add.
May I just add this? And now, she basically said that when ones and SIP is out there, there is some type of, uh, who's on first and who's on third. That is not my problem. That is not the citizens' problem. That is your intercommunication problems if you're out there and then you don't know who to ask. And so you say high risk, kids at risk, the children who are killing themselves are the particular, um, audience that he wants. They want. And so if they're not there because SIP is taking care of something, then it is redundant. Because where you actually get information to solve these crimes is when they actually happen.
Yeah.
And people are more willing to talk. Please let me finish, right? And so to not have them there, we, we actually are there when it happens, and then we go to the hospital. You're saying that there's a liaison at the hospital. And so crucial time and information is being lost because SIP is there. Ones is not there because you said that they're supposed to be dealing with the audience that they're dealing with. I don't understand that, and that's why we say they're working in silos, alright? And so I'm saying that y'all are intentionally, she just said it, you're intentionally keeping them separate, but we're losing vital information at that time. That's not gonna change.
I think, I think it's a difference, not of that. It's not silos, it's roles. Um, and I, I still respond to more violence events than anybody here.
Well, that's you. That's what you wanna do. I don't wanna do it because the ones is there.
We let you.
No, you didn't. You cut me off because I was finished talking, so.
Because they were responding to you. But the reality is this, is that, that everybody has a role to be able to play. And in this case, when I go to the hospitals, I, I'm usually there, and I usually see someone from ones there doing what they do. When you see an incident happening and the police are doing investigative work, um, often I will see someone from ones, um, there around it. But I think the, 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 the statistic that is the most valuable is the one that we can't provide. And that is how many incidences have been prevented because of the work of ones.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
One moment, one moment, please. Um, in every, and I think data is extremely important.
We don't hit it.
And, and best practices are important, and, and we have learned. And I've been engaged personally in this work from the beginning of, of the national conversations. And when you see you have these drops in violent crime, you're also seeing where you have a non-law enforcement preventative response with trusted community messengers, um, that are able to lower temperatures, um, when violent crimes, prevent retaliation. Uh, and then more importantly, also building relationships, uh, on the front end, helping young people, um, particularly young men. Uh, in this community, certainly young men, are determining another way. That is the role, uh, of ones. Now SIP has a, a different role, um, and this is people that are just as impacted, uh, just as involved. I think we were probably the first to start it off when I was here when it occurred, and it was extremely successful. And we were very upset when, uh, it went away, and this council worked to bring it back and to expand the power program. Um, because that's, that's a different role. It's not necessarily silos. I think there are intersecting opportunities, and since they're all on the same team, there are opportunities to be able to communicate. Obviously, opportunities for individuals who, um, there is coordination and, and case coordination on that. But I think, you know, to, to indicate that because we're not able to say how much we prevented, um, I don't think that's necessarily fair to, I know the professionals at the ones office who are in these streets busting their behinds all hours of the night. Uh, and again, you know, yesterday, ties and tacos or, you know, they, we brought these, I remember I brought these young men before council. I wanted you all to see these young men who were, um, either very close or actively engaging in violent crime, who said they would not do that anymore. And so far, so good. I saw Alicia, and then I saw.
Can I finish, please?
But, but we'll come back to you. Let's, let's go and let some other folks talk. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think, I think, uh, let me ask you this. How many are employed with the ones program?
Looks like six, six out of seven.
Because it's thanks to me, the mayor said that that program was at ties and tacos on yesterday, correct?
I think it had a tie and taco, I think yesterday.
If, if it wasn't yesterday, then there's a problem. But if it was yesterday, then they couldn't be in two places at one time. But if they weren't at where SIP was yesterday, then we might need to look at, um, putting more people in the ones program so that individuals could go to, uh, the events that's held by SIP and other entities.
Yeah.
Okay?
One.
If, if it's only six for the whole city, then that might be a problem. So we might need to look at.
We do have, we, we, we've added some last year. We, there's ten F T Es for ones office. Ones is a very small office.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, a, a total budget of, of under two million dollars. Um, and to get a little bit to the roles conversation as well, there's, you know, we're talking about vital information and solving crimes. That is the police department's job. You know, ones office is there to try to prevent, um, those crimes from, from, from happening. So, uh, I, uh, it's a, I, I would be concerned taking away resources for ones because I think that we are preventing, um, community violence. I would, but I do wanna make sure that council has confidence in the program and believes that we're headed in the right direction. And would, would, would love to spend some time, um, in the field, um, uh, experiencing what, what ones' mission is so that we can better hone that to meet those needs. But I do, I do, I do wanna emphasize it.
We have ten.
Ten F T Es in this budget.
F T Es, right? And only six are there now, right? Is that what I heard? It's only six on that staff?
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, there's six, there's, um, there's, there's four which we will hire when the office.
Right, okay, so as long as we put more people there, and then they can, they can possibly do what, um, the, all the persons are saying in the events that they have with SIP and what happened. It's, it's a win-win.
Yeah, I think it's opportunity to also better communicate.
SIP is phenomenal, so let's just merge them, you know, when it's time for events. Keep them separate, but when it's time for events, like the turkey giveaway, you know what I'm saying? Okay.
Okay.
So, um, let me offer a unique perspective, if you will. Um, I like the mayor have the opportunity, uh, unfortunately at times to, I go to the hospital when our, our juveniles are injured. Uh, they've been victims of crime. Um, every time I go, ones is there. Uh, I see ones in our schools. I see them out in our communities. They're, they play a vital role. I think the program is hugely successful. Um, there are times when juveniles do not talk to the police. They, they just don't feel comfortable talking to police. And oftentimes, uh, our, our ones folks step in, and they're the ones getting information and sharing that with the police department. And it is, it is not strictly a ones approach. It's not strictly a police approach. It is a community partnership collaborative, right? So to me, um, you know, ones has a very specific purpose, and it is, uh, it's vital. I, I think we talk about adding resources, um, let's add personnel, let's add more people to ones. I think, I think it's a huge, it's a huge benefit, um, for public safety. And, you know, it's nice to see them at different events. It's great. Um, but I like seeing them out in the street. They're, they're in our neighborhoods. They're at the playgrounds. They're, they're, you know, in areas where you, you just wouldn't expect ones to be. And I, I think that's extremely important in helping to curb violent crimes. Like the mayor said, you don't know, you can't measure, um, how much crime has been deterred or stopped uh, based upon either police involvement or ones involvement. But we can measure what we've seen in the past few years of a drop of crime, uh, or the solvability of cases. And I think that's a huge impact for us. So, um, I applaud the ones department. I applaud the public safety departments. I think it's, uh, I think it's a great partnership, and I, I just wanna see that partnership grow, flourish, and, and hopefully we can add more resources to both.
If I may speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Nothing, please.
Ms. Mayor, we are having this meeting.
Let, let, let Chief, go ahead, Chief.
But it would be something that I'm not.
Ma'am, please, let's Chief.
Ms. Mayor, we are having this meeting because, uh, you, you, Mr. Mayor, you, you, you cut me off, and you said you was gonna come back to me.
And I will come back to you.
Well, I wanna come back before that, with that.
One moment, Chief, please.
Uh, I think the conversation is great. Um, you actually listened to all of us. I was speaking about a holistic approach to, uh, addressing crime, uh, in our community. Uh, and I will say that I'm in a unique position. Um, years ago, uh, I was the law enforcement coordinator for the Angun Violence Program. Um, basically, it was the ones office inside the P D, uh, and I was the, um, uh, the leader for that. Um, so I've seen the ebbs and flows of the program, um, and, uh, the success it has now. Um, I do agree that the ones office needs to be a separate entity from the police department. Um, but on the other side of that, the communication has to be seamless, and a partnership has to be there. And I will say that partnership is there now, uh, with the ones office. Um, it's pretty seamless. I can reach Director Johnson anytime I want to. Uh, the team comes out, um, when needed, when requested, and they also initiate, uh, responding to, to scenes. Um, it is true, we have two different missions. Um, the police department, we do investigate. We also create inroads to prevent and intervene in crime. But the ones office is, that's their specialty when it comes to prevention and intervention and gaining that, uh, garnering that information from the community that we need. A lot of things that happen behind the scenes that, um, most don't know. Um, and the information that we get helps us to prevent incidents of retaliation and violence, uh, and they do the same thing. Um, maybe on our end, we can open up our doors a little bit more and, uh, inform the ones office when we're having these community events and what they can be part of, um, so can, that they can deepen their footprint. But, um, many times we do partner. Um, I'm informed when they're having the community walks, uh, they're going in the neighborhoods. And although they're two different missions, uh, many times, or all the time, we have the same goal, uh, to eradicate violence in our, in our neighborhood. So, um, I am open to suggestions regarding a future partnership with the S P D or Savannah Impact and the ones office. But I'm, I'm firm in stating that the partnership is there, uh, and they're doing pretty good work. Um, and we couldn't have a reduction in crime, uh, last year or a reduction in shootings this year, uh, without the partnership of the ones office, so.
Alright, so follow me, Brian, then we're gonna move on.
Well, well, first of all, I wasn't negating that they weren't doing what they, uh, assigned to do. We don't know that. You work for law enforcement, you're the mayor, so they're gonna call you and let you know what's going on, and it's your decision whether you wanna be or not. You get that information because of the job that you have, but we don't get that information. And so all I'm suggesting is, in order for us to be accountable, then we need that information. If they're doing such great things, how come we got to wait so long for these reports? And then I wouldn't be saying what's not happening. The communication is not there. And if all of these things are in place that everybody is saying is doing, then I wouldn't be saying, well, what is ones doing? We don't get a report. We get y'all come and do a presentation on paper that sounds good and looks good. And when you say that y'all can't measure, we, we should not be in a, uh, an administration where we say we can't measure what the reduction is. We can. We do it all the time. Y'all come and give us statistics about reductions. So to say that ones, the, the, the positive things, uh, can't be measured is kind of alarming to hear that from everybody, right? Let, let me, let me just finish, please, sir. So I'll be finishing. So accountability is always gonna be the main thing for anybody who sits in a seat. We need to be able to tell our constituents, this is happening or this is not happening. What I suggested and what you're saying happened, for me, didn't happen because we don't get these reports. Now, if you want me to stick my chest up and say we're doing a good job, then I should have some paperwork to reflect that. And if we got two organizations who don't know what they're supposed to be doing at an actual site that happened, then there's a problem. And that's all I wanted to say. We need to be held more accountable, and that is why people hired us to be accountable. And if anybody's saying that we're here trying to be argumentative, we're not. And the whole idea of us coming back is so that if my vote, I wanna be able to make my vote be accountable. And, and to stop us and say to move on from one thing when people have not and cannot, uh, complete a thought is very disrupting for me. I, I, I don't, my mind doesn't work like that. I will be short in what I need to say, but I don't wanna be interrupted, and then y'all say it's okay. It's not. Thank you.
Apologies if I interrupted.
Thank you.
That's continued, thank you.
Uh, I, uh, I think the, the issue around, um, the, the data collection, i- isn't that, I think the point around was, the goal of ones is to prevent violent crime. Um, and it's very difficult in data to prove a negative, right? So there's not a data point where I can say, you know, um, Jay is a youth that we're engaging in the ones office, and because of our engagement, um, Jay did not commit a violent crime.
I'm not suggesting that.
So, no, no, I understand. So what, I think what we're trying to do, and you can look at some of our workload measures on page one seventy-four, and those dashboards too are gonna be better refined with Savannah G P S, is thinking through what, what are the data, what is the data, and what are the North Stars for every program, including the Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement? So what we wanna see is, um, who are the youth that we're engaging? We wanna see, are the youth that we're engaging, are they engaging, um, in violent crime or community, or community violence, um, uh, after our engagement? Um, how many youths are, uh, engaged in violent crime or community violence who were not engaging? So are we targeting the right youth? Are we serving the right youth? Are the youth that we're serving, um, are, are, are they committing violence or are they not committing violence? So those are the, the, the data points.
And that's measurable, sir.
That we can measure, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, those, yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm, I'm just concerned, uh, Ms. Young, the therapeutic recreation that's at Delaware, did I hear you not say that they have moved it?
The, do you still have that calendar I gave you? So that calendar shows that our young, our, our seniors that were using the, the therapeutic, uh, portion of, from across the street at Williams Court is not there anymore. I mean, it was a misinformation given, and we trying to work with the city and Williams Court to get them back across the street. But they've been given the information that they not wanted across the street, that they can't get there.
It's not there.
Across the street, that it's not there, and the person was not there. So now we trying to work along with the city staff to figure out how we get them back across the street. Because the, 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 the program itself and the improvements that were made to the building.
Were because of.
Was because of that, yes.
So you said, you said the city staff?
It was a mix-up.
City staff said, told them they not wanted it?
It was, it was a mixing communication that the seniors from across the street had a similar program, and they could stay across the street, and the city staff did not want them across the street. So we working with Williams Court now to figure out in a calendar, when can our seniors come back across the street for programming?
For clarification.
They were using it.
Yeah.
As an alternative, and so obviously, you can't interfere with city program if we allow them to.
But it was a part of city program.
For clarification, the therapeutic recreation program is a recreation program for, uh, special needs, uh, individuals. That's separate from the senior programming that was happening. You know, by Delaware, we have senior residential housing across the street. Um, so at some point, there was a conversation between City Rec and the facility, the, the housing facility that offers their own programming within the facility.
Okay.
And so there was much more involvement at one point from our recreation staff going over to the facility. Uh, for one reason or another, that seemed to have dissipated, and Alderman Leggett stepped in to say, hey, wait a minute. The seniors in there are telling him they still wanna be engaged at a higher level. And so he has also helped to reconnect that relationship. Um, and the staff in our recreation program are now increasing the availability of programming for those seniors because the seniors don't wanna have all their programming where they live. They wanna come across the street.
Program for the young people.
That's a separate.
It's still there.
It's still there and has been.
And how many, well, I guess.
I'll get the number. I'll get the number for you.
How many young people are actually involved in this program, that's what I would like to know.
I'll get that information and what all the programming encompasses for everybody.
Exactly, thank you so much.
Clarification, how many, um, youths are involved in our therapeutic recreation?
Right, how many youths are involved in the therapeutic recreation?
Okay, um, and in this discussion, I just don't want it to be missed, in terms of recreation, as part of this proposed budget, um, administration of the Jenkins High Pool is also incorporated. Um, there have been, uh, three lifeguard positions and a pool monitor positions that are also incorporated as an additional, um, head count, um, in the proposal to administer and incorporate that in our programming next year.
So we have now acquired Jenkins?
We did not acquire it, we are, we have entered into an, an agreement to operate and incorporate Jenkins High, um, Pool Site in our annuals pool, pool service, pool recreation program. And so we're adding additional head count in the proposal to administer that addition.
I saw we were moving on, yeah.
No, it's about the pool. Okay, so, uh, we had three pools, right? And then, uh, the, um, president, Mr. Mars came back and said that he would be willing to add Jenkins. And so I see where our budget increased because we added Jenkins, and what exactly is their monetary agreement? Are they just saying that we can use it, but we're gonna have to pay for it?
So I think you'll also remember in the SPOS.
Because it increased our budget, we had three, we wanted another one, so that affected our budget.
Yes, ma'am, you'll also remember in the SPOS state list, um, there was a, a program for the, the acquisition of some of the school board pools, which was, um, I think something this council discussed and brought up several times earlier this year. We worked with the school board on an IGA, um, uh, to be able to, to share and program aquatics. Um, the only pool that the Board of Education that was ready this summer, um, was the Jenkins Pool. Um, and so we programmed that, but we, but we also have to recognize that those pools are still on, um, school board property, um, and impacts school operations, and so we have to work with them on the hours that those pools are open, um, et cetera. So we do have money in the SPOS eight, um, to acquire some school board pools, um, to be able to expand our aquatic programs, um, throughout the city. Though, when they are on school board property, um, we do have to continue to work with the school board.
Okay, so, again, the question was, was there some financial obligations on their part? Are we matching dollars, or are we saying that that's their facility and we have to?
Their financial obligations is to, is to hand us over an asset that meets our standard.
Okay.
But we do have money in SPOS eight.
That answers the question.
To support the, the upgrading of those pools as well.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, thank you, but we're talking about the, the, uh, pool at Jenkins, but how much is it gonna cost for us to upgrade those pools, secure those pools, and guarantee those pools once we leave them?
I don't have, I don't have those costs estimates.
And, and the reason why I'm asking you that, Mr. City Manager, is because when we talked about Delaware Pool, the pool was, uh, had a crack in it, and it was gonna cost us a substantial, substantial amount of money to, uh, revitalize that pool, and we said, well, we're just, uh, turning it into a splash pad. But we took one pool out of service, out of, uh, our, uh, service, and acquired other pools and are almost gonna be at the same financial risk.
Well, I think that there, there's a reason why there are a lot of field-in pools around Savannah. Um, and, uh, running aquatic centers, um, have a high level of risk, um, as well as a high level of maintenance requirements. So not all the pools that we have, not all the pools that the school board have are in the same condition, um, and they require different kind of repairs. There are some pools that are very old, where the repairs needed are gonna be very, very significant, and I think that was a discussion that we've had with council in the last year's budget to determine, you know, what's the return on investment? Do we wanna invest in that pool to, to, to repair it to a pool? Or do we want to turn that pool space into another, um, recreational amenities? Based on usage, um, based on cost, based on return of, on investment? Um, what we heard, we have invested mightily over the last forty years in this council in our aquatics programs, right? That's pools, and that is, um, splash pads. Uh, we, the, we have a, you know, I can, I think the city kind of landmark pool is Daphen Park, um, which has some big investments in this budget and is SPOS eight. Um, but all of our pools, you know, are important, I think it's about whether or not people are using that amenity. If they're not using that amenity, why? Is it because that they don't want it, or is it because that amenity isn't very inviting, right? And so, uh, and then what, where is the geographical access to different types of amenities? I think acquiring some of the school board pools allows us to think strategically about, uh, where do those aquatic assets need to be in our community? Where can we best invest to make sure that every part of our city has access to a quality pool? Um, and then, you know, how are we gonna be able to operationalize those in conjunction with school operations as well? So I think that we can't look at every pool as being, you know, the same as any other pool. They, they have different, uh, maintenance needs, they have, uh, different uses, um, and, uh, different pressures on them throughout the year. So I think being able to have more assets and more land, and then be able to focus in and target, where do we need the pools, where do we wanna invest in the amenity that's gonna be inviting for our community to use and use, um, seven to eight months out of the year.
Mr. City Manager, a lot of time we ask for reports. I, I asked for an inventory of the pools that we had, and how much it would cost to, uh, revitalize them. We, we've not gotten that one yet, right, sir? And so I've started writing down things with the, a lot of times we're in the heat of the moment and we ask for information that we don't always get. I'd like to know, uh, get another inventory or get the first report that we didn't get about the number of pools we have here, and how much it would cost to, uh, revitalize them, and what this administration would wanna do. To keep making these inter-agency agreements that, uh, sometimes fall through, I would mu- rather invest in one of our own as opposed to another administration, another mayor coming, and then we use the use of that post because of their administration saying that we no longer wanna do that. I think it's more feasible to take care of our own, and I would really like to get a report about how many pools we have, a- as opposed to how much it would cost to take care of a pool that we're gonna go into an agreement with the Board of Education, please, sir. And can we get that, can we get a time on that, when we can get that, so I can write that down?
I think you did, you provided that.
I just provide that to council, I can, I can resend and, and update that as well.
Would you resend it to me, sir, so much as?
We have four pools, the city has four pools, um, the s- school board has four pools.
Yes.
Um, two of our pools are in bad shape, the city's pools, and a few of the school board's pools are in bad shape.
Well, that's on me if I didn't get it, I remember having a conversation, but I don't remember having a copy of it.
I think it was, started that conversation, and Jay did provide that information pretty timely to us.
Can you resend that, please, sir?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
I'd appreciate that.
Alright, we're moving on now, please, ladies and gentlemen.
So I'd like to turn.
Melissa has part two, too?
Uh, no, we're gonna turn to, to David Maxwell.
And David is like, y'all don't need to, y'all, y'all take your time, right?
So David's.
We get so much, man.
You wanna go first?
David's gonna walk through our debt and enterprise, um, um, fund, um, and financial standings for the city in the FY twenty-six budget. Turn it over to our Senior Director of Financial Services, David Maxwell.
Daphne, can you pull up that report for me, please, the one about the pools?
Thank you.
Good morning, David Maxwell, City's Finance Department. I, I did wanna go first this morning, Mr. Mayor, but they wo- they wouldn't allow me, and I wanted to go first because now you guys are half riled up when I get up here. So, just be, just be patient, you know?
We, we saved it up for you.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of, is the other half. It might, it might be like a iceberg, you just, you might, Melissa got the part above the water, and now we're going with the below. So Melissa talked about the general fund, some of our special revenue funds, and internal service funds, and I'm just hoping there's not a test after that. But I wanna talk about our enterprise-type funds, and also some of our debt service. There was a, a comment that I was gonna hit on SPOS, but Melissa will come back up after me and go over the CIP funds, and she'll hit on SPOS then. Right. I'm on the proposed enterprise funds.
What section is that in this book?
We can point, there're gonna be different sections in the book as he gets through it, and we can give you the page numbers for, uh, the, the different funds as we move through.
Yeah, so we have talked about this slide in the past, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on this. But we segregate our enterprise or business-type funds so that we can get the cost of those services that we provide and those goods that we provide, and also match it with the revenues. So that within a single fund, we have all the revenues associated with a particular type of, uh, line of business, and also the expenditures associated with it. That helps us when we try to set rates, that also helps us when we try to calculate what sort of subsidy may need to be provided to that fund, for instance, from the general fund. We know that the city has several enterprise activities, the golf course, the civic center, including the, uh, old one and the new one, the parking and mobility fund, sanitation fund, and water and sewer. Touch first on the civic center fund, the civic center fund, as you know, encompasses both the old one and our new, uh, lease facility that we have an agreement to run with OVG. One of the things that we did with this particular fund is that we did leverage our auto rental taxes when we issued forty-five million dollars' worth of debt to complete the construction out at the In-Market Arena. I am pleased to let you know that the auto rental taxes are covering that debt service, and so that particular obligation has been funded into the future with that auto rental tax. One of the questions that I often get when I'm up here about the civic center fund is, how much money are we actually getting from OVG as they're operating the In-Market Arena? And there are a couple of components of revenue that we get from them for that. There's a base rent that we get from them, which in twenty-two and twenty-three was zero. However, in twenty-twenty, uh, four, the contract called for that to be increased to fifty thousand dollars base rent, and in twenty-five, we're getting fifty thousand dollars of base rent, and in twenty-six, that goes up to a hundred thousand. And then all, there's also different levels of revenue share depending on how the building does from a financial standpoint. And those payments over the last few years, in twenty-two, we got a million fifty-six thousand from OVG. In twenty-twenty-three, we got five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, twenty-twenty-four, nine hundred and thirteen thousand. So that building is producing some net positive revenues for the city. As we move over to the debt service, you'll see that the civic center fund just has that one bond that I talked about a little bit earlier. That was to complete the arena construction. If you remember, we had a hundred and twenty million in SPOS funds that went towards that, and then forty-five million dollars from this twenty-nineteen DSA bond. Our debt service in twenty-twenty-six is a little over two million dollars for that particular bond issue, and like I said, it is covered by the auto rental tax that's paid when people, uh, rent vehicles in the city. Parking and mobility, I was thinking earlier, when I started at the city about twenty-three years ago, we had, uh, three parking garages. We had, uh, Robbie Robinson, Bryan Street, and State Street, and now we have a total of eight garages. So this particular operation has greatly increased over the years, and we've always seen these garages as economic development tools, because if we have people in the area, they have to be able to, to park, and the more people you have in the area, the more garages that you're going to need. So right now, we have a total of eight, our newest ones being the Eastern Wharf Garage, uh, West River Street, and also the one over by the arena. Now, we don't just do garages, we know that we have certain parking lots along River Street, certain surface parking lots. We also have on-street parking that's metered and not metered, and a good bit of the revenue within the parking fund comes from, uh, parking citations and people paying for those violations. Parking and mobility fund revenues, you can see broken down there, uh, between parking garages and lots, on-street meters and citations, you'll see that we're tracking very well from year to year based on ten months' worth of actuals. We started receiving revenues in twenty-nineteen for the West River Street Garage, Eastern Wharf in twenty-twenty-one. And keep in mind that we implemented parking matters in twenty-eighteen, and we are now enforcing parking six days a week from eight in the morning until eight in the afternoon, and so that had a big change on our revenues. When we think about our debt at the city, most of our outstanding debt, if you were to look at it as a percentage, would be within the parking fund, because these parking garages are very expensive to construct. Anywhere from twenty thousand a space, for instance, up to thirty-five thousand dollars of space to construct, construct these garages. So you'll see that we have five outstanding bond issues on four different garages there. We also, as a, as a teaser, have included a couple of new garages in this budget and debt issues for those. Uh, thirty-five million for Forsyth Commons Garage, and also twenty-two million for Eastern Wharf Two. Turn over to the sanitation fund, city is operating a large, uh, garbage collection business, as all of you know, and one of the most important things that you should have when you're in the garbage collection business is somewhere to put it. And so one of the things that we're keeping, uh, our eye on is the landfill in time of expansion. And when a landfill is done, you have to close it, cap it, and monitor it, that's also another large liability of the city. And so when we think about the sanitation fund, I'm gonna skip this slide and go to this one. One of the things that's constantly on my mind is the huge liability of closing the Dean Forest landfill cells that are full. And so we have about four, uh, three cells out there, A, one A through one C, that are approaching the end of their life. And you can imagine the cost of capping those with a, with a clay cap, maintaining that, monitoring different things about it, the, the, I'm assuming Gene, they look at the soils, they look at the water, and so there's a lot of costs that goes into being a landfill operator and closing one of those landfills. And up until the twenty-twenty-six budget, we had no money set aside for that. And so one of the things that we have done in this budget is to begin to set aside funds for that future liability, which we think will, uh, start closing it sometime in the next twelve to twenty-four months. We'll begin the process of closing those old cells. And just to give you an order of magnitude, at the end of twenty-twenty-four, that liability was about eighteen point two million dollars, and we had no money set aside for that, so keep that in mind. And one of the things that this budget is doing is beginning to set money aside for that. You can see that this slide shows the different breakdown between the cells one A through one C, which you can see is almost, uh, fully utilized at about eighty-six percent, and then cell one D, which we started using in twenty-twenty-four, is only three point nine percent. So the theme of this budget is securing our future. So when we look towards the future of our landfill and someplace to put the garbage that we're picking up, we're secure there for the next twenty to thirty years, we have that facility. It's interesting to note, if you would, on the bottom of that slide, you'll see the, the monies that we're setting aside beginning in twenty-twenty-six to do that closure, eight million in twenty-six, one point five million in twenty-seven. I think those all total up to be about thirteen point four million that we'll be setting aside over the next five years. I'm gonna back up to this slide, talk a little bit about capital projects. Uh, we did complete that landfill, uh, cell one D a few years ago, so now the main focus of the capital plan within the sanitation fund is a new headquarters facility located out at Dean Forest, so that Gene can, uh, have a central location for all of his forces and, uh, the things that he uses. the things that he utilizes. The other thing that will allow us to do is better serve the western side of the city and some of those areas that we've annexed out at New Hampstead and different areas to the southwest quadrant of the city and the county. A couple of other minimal items there is the fuel site upgrade. And then again, you'll see the landfill closure cost there that I talked about earlier. That totaled about thirteen-point-four million. As we move on, debt service projections, you'll see one of the things that we've done here is level out the debt service. The new debt service for the Dean Forest Operations Center, which is going to be about thirty million dollars, isn't projected to begin until the old debt on the landfill that we just completed is paid off. So those bonds will be paid off in twenty-nine. The operations center debt will be picked up in twenty-thirty. So we've got our eye on kind of timing that so that we're not overlapping the debt. See one other item there for the Waste Management Highway Eighty, property acquisition. That's where most of Gene's forces are at now. That's the old Waste Management and that was an internal loan that got paid off in twenty-twenty-four. Like I said, that one bond issue that you'll see there was to help pay for the landfill expansion in that cell one D. All right, increased operating costs. One of the things we talked about earlier was paying our employees well. We talked about inflation a little bit this morning and how we've seen the cost of operating supplies and things like that go up. And the sanitation fund has been one that has experienced a lot of cost increase. You'll see the annual cost increase on average has been ten-point-seven-seven percent. That seems like a lot, doesn't it? Some of you who may have been around in the seventies were thinking, oh, you know, inflation was really high in the seventies and it was ten, twelve, thirteen percent, wasn't it? And so that's what we've seen here in the sanitation fund is those costs have been going up about eleven percent per year. And when you contrast that with how our rate increases have been going up, the rate increases have only averaged two-point-one-nine percent over that same period as we've tried to keep the rates that our patrons are paying as low as possible. And you can say, well, how is that? How are you able to do that? How are you able to absorb those eleven percent increase in costs on average and only raise your rates about two-point-one-nine percent? One of the things that happened over that same period was we had new revenue streams that came into the sanitation fund. We implemented a late payment penalty on people who didn't pay their bill on time. And so that was a new revenue stream that we were able to use to offset those cost increase. And the other one, the more significant one there is a host landfill, which is paid by private landfills to the city based on the number of tons that they accept. So we have a landfill, a private landfill located within the city limits that we annexed a few years ago. And they pay to us about one-point-four to one-point-eight million dollars of that host fee. And that is a state mandated fee that they're required to pay for, to us as the host city of that landfill. As you can see here, our rate increases have been around three percent in the past. As I said, they average two-point-one-nine. You might remember there was a year, I think it was twenty-twenty, where we didn't raise utility rates at all in recognition of COVID and some of the financial hardships that were going on. So that impacts that average calculation. But here, we're projecting the five percent increase to continue. We increase it five percent in twenty-five. And then we're projecting five percent increases out through the next five years through twenty-thirty. How is that going to impact the residential rate? If you look at the top line, you'll see the residential rate on a monthly basis right now is forty dollars and seventy-seven cents. So in twenty-six, that would go up five percent to forty-two dollars and eighty-one cents per month. And keep in mind, that's not just for garbage collections. That's also recycling, that's yard waste, that's bulk pickup and many different items that the sanitation department provides to its customers. Move on to water and sewer. We'll follow sort of the same pattern here. Remember, the theme of this is securing our future. And one of the things that this budget does is begin to secure our future when it comes to capacity. You guys have all heard different presentations about what we're doing out of the IND Surface Plant. We're spending a hundred and forty-six million dollars out there to expand and modernize that because we're running up against capacity issues with the amount of water that we're able to pump out of the ground and also with the amount of water that we're able to treat at the IND plant. As the demand is increasing, we're now looking at spending that money to be able to meet that demand into the future. So one of the things that this budget does is looks at the other side of that on the sewage treatment side and it includes funding for two new treatment plants. Georgetown at a hundred and twenty-five million dollars will take that capacity from two-point-four-five MGD up to four MGD. Travis Field Phase Two, you guys might remember that we built a new plant out at Travis Field. We're going to expand that from a four MGD plant up to an eight million gallon per day plant and that's going to be about a hundred million dollars. There's funding in the twenty-six budget to begin the Georgetown project and then money beginning in twenty-seven for Travis Field. One thing I would call to your attention from this water and sewer plan is that our typical plan over the last few years has been about a hundred and sixty million dollars over five years. Well, this plan in beginning last year has dramatically increased that amount. You'll see that this capital plan totals about four-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars. And I can guarantee you that four-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars didn't just fall out of the sky or float up the Savannah River. We've got to find that money somewhere. And so a lot of that is being funded by planned debt. You'll see on the chart at the bottom, we're going to put in about twenty-nine million dollars of our net income. We're going to borrow about four-hundred-and-forty-two million dollars over the next five years. And then interest on our restricted assets or our restricted cash will provide us with about six-point-five million dollars. And so that's how the four-hundred-and-seventy-seven million is going to be funded. Now, if you're like me and you're debt averse, you're like, well, can we afford that, right? Are we going to be able to afford that, David? And the answer to that is yes, with some rate increases, right? We're not just going to be able to absorb four-hundred-and-something million dollars worth of debt service and not change our rates. So keep in mind that the Water and Sewer Fund has its own credit rating from Moody's and S&amp;P. And you'll see on this slide here that they have a double-A plus rating from S&amp;P and a double-A one by Moody's. And it's interesting because the city's overall general credit has those same ratings. So the Water and Sewer Fund has a very strong credit rating. And a lot of that is based on what has happened in the past. We've been able to keep debt levels low. We've had a good split between the revenues that are coming in and the expenses. So we've been able to fund a lot of our capital plan on a pay-go basis out of our net revenues. But you'll notice at the bottom of that page, I factored in those debt issues over the next five years. And you'll notice that the debt service each year in twenty-three, for instance, was about three-point-seven million. And in twenty-thirty, it's going to go to twenty-six million. So that's a big jump. So about a twenty-three million dollar annual increase in what we're going to be paying out in debt service. One of the things that the rating agencies like to look at to make sure our bond rating is as good as we can get it is how much coverage do we have on that debt service? So do we have a lot of extra money after we pay our debt service or are we just barely able to pay our debt service? And typically, the city has been anywhere from nine to ten to eleven times on its coverage ratio. This particular plan will bring that ratio down, but it'll still be within a healthy level of a double-A rating. And so we're monitoring that along with our rating agency partners such as Moody's, who came in over the summer, did a surveillance call on the city's water and sewer debt and they affirmed their double-A rating there. Just to give you an idea of what they're looking at, you can see these rating factors are organized into different categories, system characteristics, financial strengths, management and legal provisions. And if you look over on the right, you'll see a column that's called score. And so they have scored us or our water and sewer system in each of those factors. You'll notice a lot of them are double-A, but some of them are below double-A, right? Like the first one is a single A on asset condition. And then you'll see that some of them are higher than double-A, which means that we're above our double-A peers on certain items. For instance, the second one is called system size. We're rated as triple-A. So this gives us an opportunity to know what they're looking at and where we're scoring on these particular factors. If you look at the bottom of the slide, this is a paragraph that was included in the Moody's rating report. It says, "The Water and Sewer Utility has also maintained very strong finances with revenue growth being supported by regular three-to-four percent annual rate increases and steady growth in demand. While operating expenses are rising rapidly due to personnel costs and other inflationary pressures, revenue growth has allowed the utility to maintain very strong debt service coverage almost twelve times in fiscal twenty-four while cash funding plans, while cash funding capital needs. Debt service coverage will likely weaken over the next five years as the utility has relatively sizable capital borrowing plans. However, we expect coverage to remain very strong and in line with the rating category." So that gives you a glimpse kind of behind the curtain of what they're looking at. So when we were talking with them this summer, we let them know we had these plans. Hey, we're going to be issuing a lot of debt over the next few years. We've got to put these new treatment plants in. We've got to get the system to be able to meet the demand that we're projecting over the next five to ten to twenty years. And so they let us know, hey, we're going to be looking at your debt service coverage and your ability to raise rates to be able to be where you should be financially. So we take all that information, we plug it into a financial model that looks at, well, how much water are we selling? And if you look at the top row there, you'll see total of all water consumption since twenty-twenty-four being projected out to twenty-twenty, to twenty-thirty. You see our demand for water is going to go up, right? And we've seen that go up over the years. And so we're monitoring the revenues. Gross revenues are going from a hundred and nine million to a hundred and ten to a hundred and seventeen, all the way up to a hundred and forty-five million in twenty-thirty. We overlay that on our operating expenses, which we also see going up from sixty-five in twenty-twenty-four to ninety-six-point-five in twenty-thirty. And then we've got to factor in that existing debt service. So the Water and Sewer Fund right now has two bond issues that are outstanding, a twenty-fourteen issue and a twenty-sixteen issue. And we also have an outstanding loan that we used the proceeds to do some work out at the President Street Plant. And so you'll see the existing debt service is about three-point-seven, three-point-eight million dollars a year. Very low, right? But if you look at the next line, you'll see the planned debt service on that four-hundred million in bonds that we'll be issuing over the next few years. And that'll take our debt service in twenty-thirty to twenty-five-point-three million. We bring that down a little bit further to that bottom line and you'll see the total debt coverage by net revenues. And one of the things that the bond rating agencies have told us is that they want to see that pro forma number in the future be at least one-point-seven times. So you can look and see in the past, it's been eleven-point-six-seven, four-point-nine-seven, nine-point-two, and then it starts to come down as we start to issue those bonds. But we never get below the one-point-seven that they want to see for someone with, or a system with a bond rating such as ours. Second slide of the model results looks kind of at the capital plan. We've got a very aggressive capital plan that totals four-hundred-and-seventy-seven-point-eight million. We need to make sure that we're going to have money available to fund it. And so this particular part of this model just looks at what the sources and uses of capital funds will be to make sure that we can fund those projects as they're coming onboard. All right, so what does that mean for our customer and our rates? You can see from this particular slide, rates over the last ten years or so. And on the right-hand side, you'll see the percent increase. And on the left-hand side, you'll see the dollar increase for different levels of usage. So our typical customer at the city of Savannah uses about fifteen CCF's on their bill. In that case, they'll see a three-dollar-and-twenty-two cent per month increase or about five-point-seven-one percent. You can see our average increase on actuals over the last five years, which would be twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-one, has been about three-point-three-five percent for that same customer.
I could interject something there. About a month ago, Joe and I went to Atlanta and met with our GFA, Georgia Environmental Financing Agency Director and Partners. They're the agency that put together the a hundred and forty-six million dollar funding package for the expansion of our water treatment facility. One of the things that I bragged about for the director was how the low cost of water that we have in Savannah, it's one of the lowest costs of water in the entire state. It is, actually. And...
Not according to our constituents, but go ahead.
So one of the lowest costs of water in the entire state. I bragged about that point. The GFA director pushed back a little on that being a point of brag and emphasized that GFA and the state really value that people understand the true cost of water. So as we make these investments in this necessary and critical infrastructure, we want to keep rates as low as possible. But we also need to make sure that we're investing in infrastructure so that clean water is always there. The sewer capacity is always there as well. And right now, our water rates are, do not reflect the true cost of water. They're well below it. I think we can maintain a low rate. But we have to be, have to have our eyes wide open in terms of the infrastructure investments that were needed, what that is going to cost the system and what we need to do in terms of rates to keep that there. So I just wanted to add that tidbit from our GFA director when we met a month ago. Thanks, David.
All right, this is the final slide here for water and sewer. And what it's showing are the projected rate changes over the next five years. You'll see in twenty-twenty-six, if you just look at the bottom third of that slide, you'll see the five-point-seven-one for the fifteen CCF user. And then you'll see those increases are going up each year. Twenty-seven is six-point-two-eight, twenty-eight is seven-point-four-four, eight-point-five-eight, and then it begins to tail back down in twenty-thirty. I think overall, this five years for the average customer, that rate increase is going to be about seven-point-two percent. Certainly, we're going to keep our eyes on this. And as we get more information about what the capital plan is going to actually cost, certainly these five years are just projections. So we'll firm up things as we go to try to keep these rates as low as possible. But I think what we're showing you here is a conservative, I won't call it a worst-case scenario, but it's it does have some ability to have an upside to it. Final slide looks at our governmental debt. Keep in mind that what we just went over was our enterprise funds. Governmental debt is debt that we use for things like road improvements, buildings that the city might occupy and that sort of thing. These list all of the different outstanding issues and I won't go through each of them. A lot of it has to do with the Broughton Street improvements and streetscapes that we did. Also with the Gwinnett Street widening from, what is that, I-16 out to the new arena. We issued bonds for that. A lot of it has to do with the road improvements on President Street and the drainage improvements at Bilbo Canal out the President Street area. It is interesting to note that in twenty-twenty-five, we did pay off three bonds. And that wasn't anything spectacular. We just got to the end of those bonds and the life of them ran out. That was the twenty-fourteen Downtown Savannah Authority Bonds, which helped to fund some of those improvements over at the Eastern Wharf development, like I talked about, President Street and the Bilbo Canal. Twenty-sixteen City of Savannah Geo Bonds and twenty-seventeen City of Savannah Geo Bonds, both helped to fund the Broughton Street streetscape improvements. And both of those Geo Bonds were paid through SPOST, seven proceeds. And the total amount of those three bonds, the annual debt service was about one-point-seven million. So as far as the general fund impact, about a million dollars will go back to the general fund now each year so that, because those bonds are paid off. That's all I have for you, Mr. May. I'll turn it back over to you and the city manager.
Thank you so much. Please go to slide sanitation fund projected rate increases. And this is for the trash.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm looking at, what is the, what, what is the, uh, two point fifteen CY, sixteen point forty-seven, forty-eight point ninety-five? What, what is that?
Yeah, so those are the different size of compacters. So that's from two to fifteen cubic yards of waste. It's just the different sizes.
Oh, cubic yard, okay. And, um, this is downtown River Street. They have to pay seven point thirteen in two thousand twenty-four, seven point forty-nine. This rate is going to increase over amount of time. River Street downtown lanes, so, um.
Yeah, so those rates are increasing at the same five percent that, of the residential rate is. But those are the compacters that you see in these lanes downtown. In order to, and maybe, maybe I should let Gene talk about it, but we put, place those compacters there so that they're not having to get like ten different dumpsters and put them in those lanes. So we require them to use our compactor. I don't know if you want to add to that.
You don't have to do that. Now, um.
It's to minimize the number of garbage collections and different providers in the area. So we just provided a full.
Right.
That's on the commercial side.
Right, so, um, residential. How are, how are, uh, people being charged? What is it per garbage container or?
Yeah, per garbage container, per two-month period. So that's billed bi-monthly. So typically, people have one container, sometimes they want two.
Right, so the water bill is only supposed to come every two months?
Yeah, the typical service period, we say it is around sixty days. So it, it's possible to get a bill that's dated in consecutive months if it's like January first and February twenty-eighth or something like that. But generally, it's every other month.
The, the utility billing software, the, um, we're trying to get to a place where we can, and the, the meter modernization program that we're, that we're doing, uh, we're trying to get to a place where if we wanted to bill every thirty days, we could bill every thirty days. If we wanted to bill exactly every sixty days, we can bill exactly every sixty days. Our billing pattern is predicated on our ability to manually read water meters, right? So with the AMI modernization, um, where we're putting those modernization on all our meter readers, um, that, that system will be able to be automatically read. So that constraint of having to go manually read the readers and that the time that it takes to do so won't be there so that we can. That's one of the things that I heard from council very early on, um, in my tenure here, was wanting to streamline that process. And that's, those are the investments we're making there to make sure that we can have, we can set a billing rate that this, um, council wants to set.
The reason why I asked about this is because we have constituents that get a water bill like every month. When it used to be, you get a water bill every two months. So am I hearing from you, um, city manager, that some people get billed on, uh, thirty days? Some people get billed on sixty-day cycle? Is, is that what you're telling me?
No, how many different cycles are there?
Well, I can tell you that, but there's nine cycles that we have, okay? And, and what you said is true. There's a group of about a hundred large commercial users that we do bill every month, and that's called Cycle Nine. And they, we bill them every month because that was an, an early AMI pilot for us. Because a lot of times they're out in these industrial areas where it takes us a long time to go read them. Or the meter might be locked up behind a gate somewhere or part of their production facility. And so, a- and those industries like to get a monthly bill to help them close their books. So besides those one hundred that's on Cycle Nine, everybody that's on Cycle One through Eight gets a bi-monthly bill of approximately sixty days. There's nobody other than those hundred or so that gets a monthly bill.
That, that is, that's, that's not true. And the reason why I say that is because I don't communicate with these people that have the industrial plants and what have you. I'm talking to constituents who are actually getting a bill like every month. So we might need to look into that situation because that, that's not the case. I, I'm sure that they have that information. I don't have to give specific names. The Revenue Department has that information, so.
The, the way that it's billed now, it, and what David says is correct, but they're, each cycle, there are nine cycles. They have approximate number of days between the cycle when they differ, um, because of the need to manually read the meters, right? Now, the, the, the thing that's true is that you're only getting billed for the water that you use, right? So, um, if I read, if we read your meter every thirty days, every sixty days, or once a year, you're still only going to be billed for the water that you use. Whatever the time period is between, um, when we read your meter and send your bill. What the AMI project is going to be able to, and the new utility billing software that council purchased last year, what that's going to be able to produce is an ability, like David said, for these a hundred customers where we're able to read the meter instantaneously. Um, the customer can see its water usage anytime they want to log into the system and see the water usage. Um, and we'll be able to set a billing cycle, um, based on our billing needs, not necessarily, um, based on our ability to manually read the meters and the time it takes to do so. So that's, that's something that we're going to app, that we've been looking into for four years. We've been investing heavily in these AMI modernization projects. We're investing in a new utility billing software so that we can get to a point where if council wants to send every water customer a bill once a month, we can do that. If city council wants to send every water customer a bill every exactly sixty days or the first of every other month, we can do that as well.
Okay. We really need to look into that situation. Y'all saying one thing, but our constituents are experiencing something else.
And if you have, and there, and there are instances where, um, meters are difficult to read, um, they're, we have a, 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 a process by which if we can't read a meter that, you know, we base it on, on previous usage. But if you have a specific customer, um, please send us that so we can look into that, um, issue. And we're, and we're usually able to solve that issue, um, pretty quickly. I do think that with the AMI investments, which has been a really, really tremendously, um, done project, and we're well underway to covering all of our customers and the new utility billing software that's going to be implemented, um, once those things are in place, we will be able to set our, our billing cycles based on the needs of our billing system, not necessarily based on the output and work demand of meeting, uh, reading main.
So two quick points for me, then I'll go all the way to Brian. And this is, this is me complaining, um, because that's what I do for twenty-two years.
But you, you didn't finish, I didn't get finished. No.
Oh.
I, I want to ask you about bonding, about the bonds. We have how many bonds out? Just with the enterprise fund, you're talking parking garages and what else is that?
Yeah, so the sanitation fund has one, Water and Sewer has two, and parking garage operation has five, is that right? One, two, three, yeah, five.
Can I get a list of all of those bonds that he's talking about? And I also like to know who are the persons, are the businesses that got those bonds? Uh, who, 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 who's paying those bonds back?
Yes, we can absolutely do that. And, um, and a lot of that information is going to be in your, um, annual financial report as well. So we'll, we'll provide that information.
Right, I, I would like to have it in hard copy as well.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to deter you from asking for that, but you'll find more details on those slides that I just gave you. Because they actually will tell you what the purpose of the bonds were.
Which ones, where, where would I find that at? I'm looking.
Yeah, so for instance, on this one, this is all the governmental debt. And then right here tells you what it was used for. So this is all the governmental debt that we have.
Okay, I'm looking for one in particular, but we'll talk offline about that one.
Also pages forty-five through fifty of your budget book outline everything that David's gone over.
Thank you. All right. You finished?
Oh, I'm finished, yes, thank you so much.
So let me pick my issue back up again. And it's just me. And I've always said this, Jay. I don't cook. I don't generate a lot of trash. I might have weekly one grocery bag of trash. My neighbors have a whole bin of trash.
And why is your bill?
I don't, I don't think it's fair. That my little bag, I have to pay the same for my little bag as my neighbors have the whole freaking, um, you know, trash bin full of stuff. As a matter of fact, sometimes it's even easier for me. It's easier for me when the trash folks come through. I, I, well, I won't do that anymore. But I would just walk, I would just walk to the trash, the compactor myself and take my little bag and just put it in there. And y'all should be paying.
So you want, you want free refuse?
No, I'm saying, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that when you're there. No, 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 let me finish. But it's just that the issue is of volume.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you know, our volume, um, effort. I mean, you know, sometimes it, sometimes these ladies and guys are dragging out these heavies. You know, for me, it's just, and I'm just saying, I'm just saying that I understand the reason why, Jay. I'm just saying it because it makes me feel a little better getting it off my chest.
Yes, sir, I understand. And I would use the analogy of, um, for all of these services that the city provides, including any millage rate services, are cheaper monthly than your, than what you pay in streaming.
Yeah.
Okay? And that's basically per average household, you pay less in government service than you do for streaming.
No, that is true.
Now, now.
But I'll tell you, to, to, in that analogy, you might stream more TV, more Netflix than I do. But I'm still paying the same rate for the access to that streaming service. So there's, we, we don't charge our, um, boat, our, our refuse any differently than any other, um, refuse company would do. This is industry standard. I understand that some people say they produce less trash and that's wonderful. That's keeping the life of our, um, landfills longer and it's going to reduce your costs in the long run. Um, and certainly going to, you know, um, make you feel better because you're doing the right thing as a human by, um, repairing, reusing and recycling. But that, the, the, I understand that complaint, it's, it's.
I just had it get off my chest because it just makes you feel better.
I think we need to get more trash.
I know. And my recycling, literally, it's like a month because it's just, it's not enough. So you just kind of, go ahead, the same thing?
Yes, uh, I have an actual step. Yes, uh, uh, well, we're seeing in real time the, the big cost of, of landfills, which are up ahead. And the consequences of not paying attention to do it can be felt really close to home. Uh, the City of New Orleans is headed into their budget session right now with a two hundred and twenty-two million dollar deficit and have to make cuts because they haven't made those big-ticket investments like the water system. So the enterprise fund, i- it's a lockbox, but it is a one-way street. We have to pay our general fund into it to compensate for it each year, but we don't get to pull funds out. Uh, and that's smart, uh, but we do need to look at incentives to reduce waste. I would love to see us implement a pay-as-you throw program where residents can opt into a smaller-sized sanitation cart for a discount on their services if they utilize less and incentivize them to, to take up less space in the landfill for good practices so we can elongate the, the lifespan of the one that we have. Uh, and, and taking a look, I, I know after this one is capped and done, I don't want to think about what we have to do afterwards to find a new suitable site. It's not going to be fun. Uh, we either have to come up with an incinerator, build land out into the ocean or, or, uh, uh, something creative.
Well, we, I think those are, are good points. We'll put that in the, uh, parking lot and a pay.
That could be a strategic plan.
Absolutely.
Yeah. The other issue is this, and then, uh, all women, thank you Nick. Was this, is that, and I know it happens to you because we both contact by the same people, I wanted to let council know. We can do this really, 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 really cheaper. We are, we are approached, I know I'm approached, I know you are, by private companies that say, we can provide the same service at a much, much cheaper, what, I was going to say, at a much cheaper cost. I think, and I believe, and I hope council agrees with me, that there is value added by the service we provide and the service we provide doing it ourselves.
Yes.
So I think when we talk about the cost, and I think we are as, um, as, as, as responsible as we can be, it's not that we, we can do it cheap. We choose to do it at a higher rate because of the value that's added, because of the employees that we have, the, the value we provide to them in pay compensation, the things that they're able to do, um, um, that I think brings value to our residents, um, that private companies just don't do. And so as, as we go through this, I think we just have to keep that in mind. And folks will come up and say, well, you know, we've been looking at your numbers. They'll look, they're looking at it right now. And they'll say, based on this, we can do it for this, and we can save your residents this. And I hope that we don't go to the point of privatizing. But I think city manager will tell you, and I don't know Gene, but every year, folks are coming to us, approaching us about doing that. And I just wanted to learn that as well as we discuss that. All women, Brian.
Mister, um, mayor and Mister City Manager, you, you welcome that you're, you're, uh, bragging on the cost of water services. We want you to brag on the billing services. I have some constituents whose water bill is eight hundred dollars and they only get, uh, social security for eight ninety-one. So there is, um, some accountability in that. And, uh, Mr. Maxwell and for anybody else who's producing, y'all, y'all should not come up here thinking that we're trying to beat you up. What we're trying to do is beat up the process and we're trying to make you do better. Uh, most of my constituents in, in the district that I am, we, we say that we have to go by the charter. The charter says that we're supposed to pay every two months and y'all always tell us to go by the charter. Y'all can't beat us up and use the charter when it's convenient. I actually have went through before Heath, I was getting a bill for thirty-nine days and forty-five days and sixty days, so it's not straight. We keep giving you this money to increase the, uh, likelihood that the parity of the billing system and what it actually costs is actually with the building that they're going to get. So for the city manager or him to say that, we're on the cycle when I've been in Savannah for a while and there was no problem. We got a bill, we paid for it. But now we're getting a bill that we can't pay for because we're getting more, which getting charged more for, the city manager say is for a good, uh, price. The price is not the problem, it's the billing service. We need to make sure that we take care of our constituents who only get less than a thousand dollars. And so, uh, I took that point, but I wanted to, uh, Mr. Maxwell, uh, can you explain to me about the special bond or the special revenue? I'm trying to figure out, there's seven, I can't find it again. But there are the services that included the rental fund and the motel, hotel and some other things.
Yes, and special revenue fund.
Yes, sir, the special revenue funds. Can you tell me how that works? It says that we put money in that, I thought we were getting money from that to go into the budget. Can you explain to me how that works, please, sir?
Yeah, so the, the accounting rules say that revenues that have special restrictions need to be accounted for separate from the general fund.
Yes, sir.
And the two that you mentioned, hotel motel tax and auto rental tax, are authorized for us to collect from the state, but the state also tells us how we have to spend that money. For instance, with part, with the hotel motel tax, I'll use that as an example. For every dollar that we take in, we're also told where that dollar can be spent. So part of it is given to the general fund. So out of that hotel motel tax special revenue fund, you'll see a transfer out and a transfer into the general fund. Then part of that money also goes over to our, uh, tourism product development fund, which is a capital projects fund. Part of it goes to the Trade Center to fund their operations. And then part of it goes over to the, uh, destination marketing organization. uh, destination marketing organization, which is required by the statute as well. So we're.
Visit Savannah?
Correct. So we're required to account for the revenue in a separate fund and the dispersals in a separate fund, but part of that can go into the general fund, for instance.
What page is that on, or what slide is that on in this book? Or is it in the book?
I think Melissa had a slide that had transfers on it.
And so.
Fifty-two, she said.
Thank you.
And you'll see a total of the special revenue fund, uh, there on page fifty-six.
And if you, you, the other one you brought up was auto rental tax. You might remember during my presentation, I talked about how the auto rental tax is used to pay for the bonds on the in-market arena.
Yes, sir.
But those, when we collect the tax, it goes into a separate fund. It goes into the special revenue fund for auto rental tax, and then we just make a transfer over to the civic center fund.
Okay, so they go into buckets, and then they go into our budget, and then we disperse them where we want them to go. Where the state says that they can only go.
That's correct.
All right. So I wanted to ask you another question, Mister, uh, Maxwell. Tell us what we can do to assist you in getting a better return on our investments in one of the enterprise where the, the, uh, water resource is an enterprise, right?
Correct.
And that's where I get most of my complaints from, from ours. What do, what do we need to do differently to make sure that these elderly people and these single mothers are getting the type of service they need when they come into water services, because they're not? And it's plain because of all of the complaints that we get, sir. What, what do we need to do? What needs to be addressed so that we can fix that moving forward, sincere?
Yeah, so I think I have heard a couple of different issues in relation to that, and may, let me make sure I'm.
Customer service being the first one.
Yes.
The billing cycle, right? And how do we, uh, address that, when you say we're only paying for the water that we use and these people aren't using eight hundred dollars worth of water, right? So can we fix that eternally before, interim, before they come down there? Because I have several, I have a list that we, we share all the time, and it's the same thing, and yet we're getting the same results. That's all we wanna do, fix that.
Yeah, the, the answer that I can give you is, I don't know. Because one of the things that I see, and I work in the same building and I supervise those operations, is that oftentimes constituents or customers will tell you, for instance, that I got an eight hundred dollar water bill. All right, well, what they're not telling you is that I, I did get an eight hundred water, eight hundred dollar water bill, but I haven't paid any of my water bills for the last two years. So that wasn't a cycle bill. It's a, that is the cycle bill plus all of those other bills that I haven't paid. And then secondly, it's not just a water bill. It's water, it's sewer, and it's sanitation. So when they tell you they had an eight hundred dollar water bill, I would encourage you to try to dig into that a little bit deeper to make sure it is an eight hundred dollar water bill and not an accumulation of them not having paid bills in the past. And like I said, it's sewer, water, and garbage.
M- Mister Maxwell, um, that's not what I said. And I have, I'm not talking about what they told me. I'm talking about actual bills. Just, just answer the question that we asked. You know, y'all give us these presentations, and y'all say we be an argumentative, but you give us more information. I'm not talking about you. I'm just saying, anybody who presents, y- y- you know, we're here because y'all said we could ask y'all these questions. It's not that we be an argumentative. Give us the time to tell you what our constituents have said. And I said that I had a constituent, not somebody who had a bill that they did not pay. I'm talking about a single bill. So that's different from the answer that you gave me. I just wanna just stay on task. If y'all want us to stay on task with these questions, just stay on task with the answers.
Yes, ma'am. So almost, um, I think that David's reflection happens often. Um, and that's, I think, important information for council here as well. On an instance where somebody has received a large water bill, and you do, you communicate that to my office. We work with utility billing to try to understand what that issue is. Uh, if it's a large water bill, one of the first places we look for is, is there a leak? We look back at previous usages. If somebody, you know, they're, they're, uh, this billing cycle, they're using ten X, ten times the amount of water that they use in the last several billing cycles. That tells us that, you know, um, there's either a leak or several other people have moved into the house and they're taking showers around the clock, which is likely not the case. So what we, we do have a program where we try to identify leaks that might occur on the, on the customer side of the meter, uh, and try to bill those, and try to, um, and we, and we deduce the, that, um, from their bill. Um, there may be other issues if the water meter was read incorrectly. Um, if the water meter was damaged in a way. All of those, um, we can address on a customer-to-customer basis. I, I, and I hear these complaints as well as council does. Um, I'll reiterate that I think the, the, the best thing that we can do to standardize our billing practices is to finish our AMI, our advanced, uh, modernization for our, uh, water meters and to implement the new utility billing software, as well as to move utility billing to water resources, which is also proposed in this budget and would happen January first. So those are kind of my three action points to, to try to respond to the concerns that you have and that your constituents are bringing to you as well.
My constituents have one bill. They understand, they've been in these houses for years. They know about refuge and sanitation. I'm talking about, y'all talking about something different. We need you to address why one person that's been paying their bills and doesn't have a second or third bill, what he's alluding to and what you're alluding to. You're, you're telling adults who've been in these houses, paying these bills for years, that maybe they don't know how to read this bill.
No, ma'am. I think that if there's.
That's what I heard.
What, what I'd like you to do is send, as you do, send us those specific cases, 'cause it's either there's a leak. It's either the meter was read wrong, or the meter malfunctioned. So we, we, but we can, we can fix all of those things. We don't believe that if somebody only uses fifty dollars of water every billing cycle and then all of a sudden uses eight hundred dollars, we don't believe that that's true. And we can, and we can work to adjudicate that, but that's not a systemic issue. That's a, that's gonna be more of a localized issue. It may happen several times because we have a lot of water customers. But we, if, as soon as you hear about those issues, um, we can get those over, um, to utility billing. And soon that's gonna be, um, in water resources, and you can contact Anthony, um, as well as our utility billing department to try to figure out what, what's happening at that customer's, um, water meter so that we can address it and we can credit their account.
Okay, so while he's here, what, what about the bill that I personally had to my house, right? Okay, and so we showed them to you, and for four different times, it was like one seventeen, one seventeen, one seventeen. Uh, wh- what's wrong with that algorithm that four different times I got the same price? And I wasn't even there because I was staying at my mom's house, and so the, it, it's just, it's.
We have to look at that.
Well, you did look at it.
Specificization. Well, I don't know, I don't, I don't have the report in front of me, but the, what, what's likely gonna be the case there is that your water meter wasn't able to be read for some reason. Either it was, you know, wa- filled with water, um.
So they guessed the meter that month?
So you.
Four times.
So we have, and you can look in our ordinance where it states how we, how we calculate a water bill, um, where you can't read the meter. Um, so we look back and there's an algorithm of prior usage that we apply. Um, then we try to work to address the ability to read that meter so that we can, um, so that we can have a correct reading. But ultimately, um, you know, you're, you're, you're not gonna pay more than the water that you're, that you're using once an, once an accurate, um, meter is read. What's gonna solve a lot of those issues again is finalizing this AMI program um, and being able to, to put AMI new modern, uh, meter readers at every customer account. Um, so that one, the customer can log in whenever they wanna log in and see their water usage. Um, that we can set billing rates, um, and billing times whenever we wanna set billing times. That the system will be able to flag whether or not a specific account is using a significantly amount more water um, than they previously have, which might indicate a leak, um, that we can go out and address. So I think that the, the, while it might be a very, a multi-year, a long approach to be able to solve this problem, um, we are well underway. We're in the third year now of this AMI modernization. We're implementing the utility billing software. We're streamlining utility billing services underwater resources where most of that service happens. And I think that, you know, in another year or two, we're gonna be able to see some pretty significant efficiencies and accuracies as it relates to our.
Okay, so just one question before, and I'll be finished with this, this, but. And so, uh, the water meters, the new ones that you, uh, that we introduced to some of the constituents, would you say that they have the capabilities of doing all that you suggested that they would be able to do, time they were installed?
So once we, once we have all of our meters on the.
No, I'm talking about the ones that have actually been installed.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't implemented this kind of, you know, customer-facing portal yet. But yes, once those AMI readers are in the ground, the first thing that we're able to do is read those meters without having to send somebody out to read it. So whether it's, you know, the, the, we can't see it, it's obstructed, sometimes there's a snake in the hole. I, you know, like, we, that won't be a problem because the meter itself is gonna be communicating to the system that this is how much water is being met, and we can pull it whenever we wanna pull it, and the customer will be able to see it. Yes, we've installed these AMI meters, um, uh, for the last two years. Once they're all fully installed, we'll be able to implement, um, that more of a, a customer-facing view where they can log in, they can see it.
Well, again, that's not what I asked. I, I asked for the specific ones that have already been installed. Are they capable of doing what you suggest that they're doing?
They are, yes.
I have one, and it's not, sir. And, and, and thank you. It's, it's not working. And so we need to do better about, some kind of adjustments or something. I actually have one of the new ones and all the capabilities that you're suggesting that they're supposed to be doing with the initial installation, that's not happening.
So it's gonna, what those.
And I'm just asking, is it, are you trying to wait until all of them, all over the system? Okay, so those are the answers, those are the answers that we need, all it. And, and so how long do you project that every person who has water services will be able to get these new AMI machinery and so on?
Um, twenty, twenty-seven, no, twenty-twenty-eight, uh, two years after this April. The first fifty thousand will be complete this April, and then there's about twenty-five thousand more to go.
People be bankrupt by then.
Okay, so, so we have funded and given you this money, and so we have to wait until twenty-eight to make sure there is some faci- some accuracy. Is, is that what you want us to take away from this conversation?
That's when we'll be done with the AMI modernization. I think with the new utility billing software that's being implemented now. Again, the expansion of the AMI program, and what we can do, and we can do a deep dive on the AMI and bring that to a workshop. It's a, it is a multi-year project to try to change over an entire water metering system.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking for a, a time, uh, because that's what people wanna know.
Will be done with, will be, will have installed. Every meter will have a modern meter, um, uh, by the end of twenty-twenty-seven. I think you said. Um, we're implementing the new utility billing software this year. Um, and we're moving the utility billing office, that division, into water resources beginning January first so that we can completely streamline this process um, and be able to integrate our AMI modern, modernization with our new utility billing software, with our ability to manage meters at the home.
Okay, and so you're confident, that's what you're suggesting to us within that timeline, that we are gonna be benefiting from this, and our constituents are gonna have a bill that actually, uh, parity with the consumption?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that questioning, all the woman, Brian. So how are these meters being read now? If they can't give you accurate information, who's reading, uh, how, how they, how are these people being billed? How are they being charged for this water?
So the manually read meters, the old meters, which many of us still have.
No, I'm talking the AMI ones, the ones that's, that's been installed that she's talking about.
AMI meters work.
Yeah, AMI has. The, um, AMI lid that you see has got the little disc on the top that's slightly elevated. That is the transmitter that is connected by wire to the actual meter itself. That sends a signal to the cellular tower. That cellular tower then transmits the data into our system where it gets uploaded and bills are calculated within the software using that data read through the cell tower.
And that's happening now?
That's happening now, yes. And about forty-five thousand meters, and I'll speak for my house on Gordon Street. I have an AMI meter. Um, I haven't found any issues with it in terms of its, uh, consistency or accuracy in terms of my consumption of water. And, uh, when we were in the cold weather last year and I dripped my faucets, I got an alert. You might have a leak. Well, I knew I was dripping my faucets. So the, the, the sensitivity of that and accuracy of that transponder seems to work very well. To these questions that have been brought up around, about specific accounts, I'm already thinking that we might need to bring people in to some type of a, uh, working, uh, activity where they can bring their bill in, uh, in a neighborhood area, and we have our, uh, data and information there that we can start sitting down with them individually by customer and looking at this data that's in our AMI system and start to work through these bills individually and build trust and confidence in the system. I mean, I've, I've been sitting over there listening, and it sounds like there's a lot of different issues at play here. And I think the only way we're gonna really get down, uh, to the core issues here is to sit with these folks, uh, have the data, uh, in our system in front of us on a computer screen with their bill and start doing that check back and forth until we get through however many months of data usage we need to, to reconcile and understand exactly what's going on here. There's obviously some disconnect somewhere, but the technology is working. We gotta find out those situations where there is some miscommunication or misunderstanding between the city and the customer as to why those particular bills are wrong.
Um, I think it was about three, four years ago, all of a sudden, the water bills changed. We were getting water bills, and I don't know, revenue people, the bills were consistent every two months. Then something happened. What happened to cause the bills to come ninety days? I mean, yes, some of them were ninety days, thirty days, sixty days, and what happened?
I mean, AMI project in, uh, early part of twenty-twenty-three. We authorized the contract in August twenty-two, and we started the full-fledged implementation in the first quarter of twenty-three. Prior to that, the meter reading program, um, was very inconsistent and, uh, unfortunately, uh, rereads and mistakes were a big part of that. There was seventy thousand meters to be manually read, pulling the lid off, wiping off the thing, recording the thing, taking it back to the office, transcribing it again. When you are messing with the data that much, you're gonna try to transcribe something incorrectly. And I think that that was kind of the peak of the problem, right as the first AMI meter started to go in the ground in twenty-three. And now we have tried to build consistency, accuracy, and confidence in that system since the first quarter of twenty-twenty-three. And at forty-five thousand meters in, I know we've made progress, but from this discussion today, we haven't made enough progress. And that's why we have to sit down with these neighborhoods or, or specific customers and work through our data, their bill, and help them understand what it is, uh, that's disconnecting here.
Okay.
And the, the other thing that happened several years ago, um, this was, uh, kind of occurring as, um, in twenty-one and twenty-two, um, we did not meet all of our, uh, meter reading, cycles, um, and had to catch up in the, in the following year. Um, and had to do more meter reading cycles in a following year to be able to catch up um, for a year where we didn't, we weren't able to make all of the, the billing cycles. And so that was an issue as well, and that's when we started to. And so, that was an issue as well, and that's when we started to.
See the double bills and the.
See the double bills. A fifty-five day cycle is different than a sixty-five day cycle, which is different in the amount of a seventy-five day cycle. And sometimes you can get your bill as quickly as fifty-five days between, or seventy-five. When you add those extra days and an extra ten, fifteen, twenty days, your bill's going to be a lot higher. But to you, and I don't know what day my bill shows up, but I do know about the amount. So as soon as I see that it's gone up, I know we haven't used that much more water, there's only two of us, I start looking at the cycle, and I see that it was seventy days, and then the previous month it was sixty. We've got to get that work consistent.
Will this new system be consistent with the bills coming every sixty days?
So that's.
And, and then we won't have this discussion of these problems?
Right, well, that's, I think, the, that's why we started on this endeavor is, and what we were talking about again, when we were able to finish this project, and we're able to read meters instantanea- instantaneously, then we can send bills out based on the number of days we want to bill people at, not the number of days it takes to read the meters in that cycle, right? So the answer to that question is yes. I want to describe why you might now, one bill, as Ron said, might be for fifty-five days of service, and then the next bill you get might be for seventy days of service. It's because how long it takes to read all the meters in that billing cycle and then produce the bills for that billing cycle. AMI is going to allow us to push a button for a billing cycle. All of those, um, bills being able to calculate it at the time and us to send, um, the bills out. So whether that's every thirty days, whether that's every sixty days, whether that's the first of every month, the first of every other month, that will be up to us to decide that, but this will give us the ability to set that rate without the constraint of how long it takes to manually read meters out in the field for a given cycle.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. City Manager, oh, Ron, that was a good idea to, uh, have a, uh, let's have a session at one of the community centers and have our seniors, if not our community, come out, and you can give them some good information. And I also think that, uh, Jay, that it's a, uh, huh, it's real good for us to be able to talk through things. And this is the, this is the only thing that our community is asking for, you being able to have a good relationship with city staff. And I'm gonna say that to, uh, to lead to this. In the scenario of having, uh, one of our seniors who live in the community, they get up early in the morning, get dressed, and they make their way down to, uh, to our city services for some help. Um, primarily, they might use the dock shuttle, or they use the fixed route or the pair of transit to get downtown, but they use the city services. But when they get to, uh, our city services and they're asking questions about their bills, being at their senior, and they get to the customer service, and when they get there, they're asking for help. And the only thing they ask for is some clarification of why either their bill or something is going on in their home, and they get an attitude from some of our staff that, uh, makes it very hard for them to comprehend. But I just want you guys to realize what the, what's been proposed by Leesa Services is that they're offering boxing now. And you have to realize, these people are getting real upset. You know, they wanna, they really want to fight because they, we are very unpopular with the community because the way that we treat and talk to people, that go a long way when we talk about community respect, when we talk about having, uh, uh, community to participate when the police are asking for help in investigations. All of this stuff trickles down to relationships. So we have to figure out how we are going to, in January one, when they start transferring over to different department heads, that customer service is, is, is number one. We have to figure out how we're going to talk to people, especially the respect that we have to have for our scenes and our grandmothers, grandfathers, and, and people who have been here and served this community, should not be treated, should not be disrespected, and should not be, uh, looked at as less because you're sitting behind a glass petition telling them either you paid his portion or the bill, or we're gonna cut you off. That's, 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 uh, that's something that some people might take as, I'm going to jump off the bridge tomorrow because I can't pay it. You know, relationships are a lot, and I really appreciate us as professionals being able to talk through situations. I just want us to be able to relate that to the public when they come and ask us for help, to be able to talk through these situations. And I think your staff, I think, uh, Leader Daphne and those who go and deep dive into these bill cycles and, and, and help our seniors as they're calling us, and we have to refer them over to staff, uh, uh, Leader and her team to make sure that, uh, they get some help.
Mr. Manager, let me, let me, I, I need to push back a little bit on this, only because, um, it's, it is a customer service issue. But I believe, and I hope to believe, that we're not casting, uh, saying wide net over all of individuals. That serve people, because that's what, that's what, but if we're not specific, that's what people will say.
But I'm just saying, this is what the public is pushing at us.
Well, what I'm saying, i- if it's, it's a customer service issue, Mr. Manager, then it's a management issue. And so, I think it's a responsibility of council, and I hope that you're doing this. If you receive that type of, uh, complaint, then it should be person-specific, and it is forwarded to the city manager for him to be able to investigate and address it. Right, because I think by and large, the individuals who service, and I, I'm down there and I watch, you know, sometimes, you know, seem to be very kind.
Because you're the mayor.
Well, no, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm just watching, no, no, sir, no, I'm just saying.
I mean, be surprised if people.
But you're not going to say and tell me that every single person in that.
No, no, I didn't say.
That's what I'm saying, but, 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 I'm for the. Oh, wait, one second. What I'm saying, if, if they are not acting in a way that is representative of this city, meaning all means all, all, everyone, regardless of your station of life, where you are, that if you come to any office in this, this, this organization, that you are treated with respect. That should be the bottom-line expectation.
And that's what I'm saying.
Well, but, but I want to make sure, because what we say, when they get there, they're treated like this. No, if it's person-specific, make sure he has it, so we can deal with the person.
You have it, we got a letter.
Because if, if, well, yeah, but it's, it's not, I mean, but I'm just saying in this case.
That should be taught.
That if, if, what, Jay, if it's a specific person, then that person needs to be successful somewhere else.
Yes.
But I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't want, because, again, you're sitting here listening very objectively, you would think that everyone in our utility department is treating people like that. And I want to make sure we're very clear that it's not. If it's specific people, then Jay, deal with it. Either they correct their behavior or they go somewhere else. But I just want to make sure in speaking about this, because if I'm working there and I'm hearing my council sitting there talking, I'm busting my behind to treat people right because my coworker is not. I want to make sure, again, that's not the experience that most savannians get, because our employees bust their behinds to do well. Now, for the ones who are not, that we need to address those. And I'm almost willing to guarantee you that if all of you have taken these complaints and you funnel them down the same thing, it's probably the same couple of people. Then we need to address that, because the question then becomes, if it's still an issue that's not being addressed, then our issues will be. But you understand that?
Yes, sir. I also, I need to, one, customer service is absolutely the first responsibility that all of us have. We have to have, we have to treat everyone with respect, we have to treat everyone with dignity. Um, we have to be able to serve our residents. Sometimes even when, you know, our residents are having a bad day and may not offer us the same respect or dignity. That's, um, that's not our job.
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, and I do get specific complaints from council, um, and I do have to handle them a specific way.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but let this be a PSA to my employees, that this is not a call for you to contact council to try to change one of your team members either, uh, because I see a lot of that as well. Um, and so, we all have a job, and we all have a job to do. Um, and we need to be, all have the professional maturity to be able to treat everyone with respect and dignity, um, and to be able to help to better our workplace, um, as well.
Yes, sir, thank you.
M- m- Mr. City Manager, I don't know of one occasion that I have not been specific with you and told you, and it's just not, it's just not me, is everybody in all of these districts are getting the same complaints from the same person. So, uh, the mayor said that I, I scream and holler for everybody when they're doing their job, because when y'all doing y'all job, then that means that our job is easier. But if we keep calling and telling you the same thing about the same people, I don't even care because our charter says that we cannot move on anything anonymously, I get that. If people are not big enough to say, this is my experience, then I'm not going to entertain that. But if it's so egregious that all of us are getting the same results, then there's a problem. I asked for an audit, I haven't gotten that information. We asked for an audit of that department because that is the department where all of us are getting all of these complaints about. And so, it's just like when people say, I just want to save one person. We want to save as many people that we can, and so, we keep getting letters and all of that, that I don't even care about that, but I gave you a specific name, you told me that there was going to be an audit, uh, based on customer service, you sent somebody there, and I've been asking, and we've been talking about the customer service experience from, for our people, not just in the third district, but all the districts, and we, we keep getting pushbacks and, and saying what can be done. But to sit here and say that Linda Wilder, Brian, don't give specific names, that's not true, because that's how you get to where the, the, the pedal meets the metal. So, sir, we're, we're not saying that it's the whole department. We're saying that we collectively have told the city manager the problems that we've had in that department. We just wanted to address so that we can move on from other things, because when we say all, it means all, and people show different people different things. And so, what you show me might not be the experience, but I'm telling you, most of the complaints I get is from water services, sir. And we just want our elderly people to understand that when we are in this position, we are at least trying to get some information that will make it better for everybody. We're not beating up on everybody, we're just trying to hold people accountable and do the jobs that they said they're supposed to do. And if you're not able to do this job, then maybe they need to go somewhere else, so that we won't waste time on the same departments. That's all we want.
Yes, ma'am, um, and I'm not, uh.
No, I, I was just addressing him that it's not the tired part, yeah.
This has been a, a, a very helpful discussion for me. I'm not scared about helping people be successful other places. Um, uh, and, uh, and, and I'm not going to be fearful of that, um, in the future. The, the, and, and you have bringing, brought me specifics, we are doing management audits over two offices, um, and, uh, and those, those are the types of, uh, due diligence that we need to do to make sure that, um, if there is somebody that needs to be successful in another place, that we can do so in the right way.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. I wasn't beating up on you, just wanted to make sure that our answers are answered with a whole lot of not bureaucracy and gobbledygook, just yes or no. Thank you so much for your time.
So, that, that concludes the presentations. I know you wanted something on. Well, of his, then we're going back to Melissa.
I'm sorry, hold on a second, Leader. I need you, a second, we have one more presentation, this is capital project, sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. City Manager, Mr. Felder was saying, when they come around our, um, uh, meetings, can they bring, uh, one of those, those machineries so that people can actually see what's happening? Can we, can we do that, Mr. Felder?
Bring, bring a model, billing data.
Well, I think it's an auction machine so people can see when it switches over.
We, we, we'll show an example of what, what the new meter looks like. And we can bring an older one.
Yes. So, you know, they know.
I like the praise, Mr. Mayor, go and be successful.
That's a good HR term. Um, so it is, uh, twelve, our, our priorities here are the budget, and our priorities here are the stormwater utility. If we don't get to housing options, um, uh, then, then we can reschedule that. There's only just one update that I'd like to give because it's on the agenda today about expanding flexibility for ADUs, but I do want to let you know that, so, getting through this presentation and then our stormwater utility presentation, I think will be, um, the most beneficial for today's workshop.
Right, and then we'll, we'll get to lunch if y'all want to, again, it's up to you all, where, where we are, so.
Um, and so, Melissa will quickly run through our capital budget. I know we've talked a lot about capital budget throughout our discussion.
Yes, thank you very much, City Manager. Um, you're concluding our session on the operating, um, portion of your budget book. Um, we are now, um, going to address our capital plan. Um, that capital plan, um, is, it starts actually on page three oh nine in your budget book. That's the capital planning volume of the budget book. Um, so as, I'm going to move forward, um, just as a quick reminder, we have a active ledger that is ongoing and recurring from year to year. Currently, our active ledger has, um, over two-hundred-and-eighty active projects in that ledger. What we are proposing in the five-year capital plan is funding appropriations for FY twenty-six through FY thirty. All those, um, that received prior funding, life-to-day funding are in that active ledger component. We're going to go over the, the five-year capital plan highlights and, um, specifically dive down into those appropriations incorporated for year one of that five-year snapshot, which would be FY twenty-six, um, because essentially, that is what the council will be adopting, um, when you adopt our capital plan budget. Uh, the remaining four years in that plan will be for planning purposes, and we definitely will update them as we go along. And so, um, back to those, um, that active ledger, um, consisting of two-hundred-and-eighty active projects, they total currently available funding is at around three-hundred-and-twenty-seven million dollars. And then, um, of that available balance, fifty-four million of that is related to drainage improvement categories and investments, thirty-nine million for mobility services, um, investments, and eighteen million in recreation. So, um, as we continue to look forward in terms of what's proposed for the next five years, our five-year plan, um, proposal will total seven-hundred-ninety-point-nine million dollars. Um, and then we, um, going to have, we're going to have general fund contributions that will more than double our standard allocation because of all of the things we've been discussing at the budget, during the budget retreat, but also in this session today, there are a lot of investments and initiatives that need, that we are bringing forward for your consideration to align with Savannah GPS. Now, um, some highlights of the five-year plan will be that, um, not only is it going to be seven-hundred-and-ninety-one million, um, for comparison, our twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-four plan totaled just under a hundred-and-eighty-two million dollars for all five years. Some of this is definitely attributed to what David just went over with you, related to our water and sewer planned investments as well. They are a component in this capital plan. In addition to, um, those planned investments in our wastewater system sanitation headquarters and those priority tourism product development projects, um, you might remember those TPD projects from last year, but as a refresher, to date, we've been funding, planning, and designing for top projects per council's resolution that is continued into this capital plan. Our project managers that are working these projects that are in progress are anticipate that we'll be ready for full construction of River Street and the Waterworks Building long before we have collected our sufficient TPD revenue, uh, to fully fund the projects, and will likely be seeking council approval of bond issuances to keep implementation on those projects ongoing. Uh, the, the drop-in TPD revenues in FY twenty-twenty-nine as a part of this plan proposal and FY thirty, uh, do represent what we project to be avail- available after paying debt service for bonds issued, um, in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So those are not being asked to be appropriated in twenty-six, but they are in our plan for twenty-seven through thirty. Now, as we, um, look at what is, um, proposed to be funded in twenty-twenty-six itself, there are seventy-seven projects outlined in the twenty-twenty-six appropriation of two-hundred-and-four-point-four million dollars. Um, they will start on page three nineteen of the, of their budget book, so you can go through and see how those specific projects are outlined by funding stream. There's a list of the FY twenty-six proposed allocations by project on each of the fund description pages, so you will have to keep flipping through by funding stream in order to see them in totality. So some of our highlights are, in addition to the annual budget required to reinvest, um, in our existing stormwater infrastructure, our allocations in twenty-six will include an additional one-point-four million for drainage, uh, in, within our neighborhood improvement areas contingent upon the adoption of the stormwater utility. The other two-point-six million of estimated revenues will support enhancements in the operating budget, including those two vector trucks and work crews that I mentioned in our proposed budget framework earlier today. Another significant highlight that we touched on before is that both our new, new construction and re. is that both our new, new construction and reinvestments in our existing facilities will require funding at unprecedented levels, um, since more than half of our proposed twenty-six allocations will support the public building improvement category, including the Civic Center legacy renovation that is currently underway. And in addition to the Civic Center, there are other major public building projects, um, that include thirty-six point six million for an administrative building, um, at the Floyd Adams Complex to house our expanding workforce and meet our space constraint needs, and nearly fifteen and a half million to construct a new Northwest Precinct, um, replacing the currently leased facilities.
If I could just add on to that, well, it's that expanding workforce, but it's really a space planning need. I think, beginning in 2020, um, City Council gave the prerogative that it wanted to get out of leased spaces. We left the Savannah Morning News Building. Um, we are going to be out of the Coastal Georgia Center, um, in a matter of years. That is a Savannah State University and a Board of Regents property that they've indicated that they want, uh, a different use for. We'll also be out of the Great Dane Building, uh, which currently houses our Northwest Precinct, as well as, um, other police administration functions. Um, we are in the landmark building for many of our, um, services. Um, so to be able to meet the, the, the space planning needs that we have currently and to keep us from being in this bind in the future, um, this is that, you know, and we've been talking about that since I've been here, I know, uh, through workshops and others, is to be able to, um, have municipal space that's going to suit our needs. So, those are, um, what a lot of those investments are there. And of course, there's, uh, forty million dollars in SPOSS eight and forty million dollars in SPOSS seven, um, to fund the council's civic legacy plan, um, uh, which is the redevelopment of the Civic Center, um, site. So, just, those are the two cost drivers, um, on that first bullet.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, as we are, are proposing a total of two hundred and four point four million dollars for our FY twenty-six allocation, there are a listing of unfunded capital project requests that were proposed by, um, fire service centers that were not able to be funded. If, uh, it pleases council, if you would like to look at that list at your leisure, it's on page three thirty-one. Just want to make sure that we're providing you a comprehensive, um, awareness of all of the investment needs. So, as we move forward to our SPOSS seven tier five, there are, um, allocations that the manager mentioned that are incorporated in the proposed capital plan to account for those collections. They total nearly ninety-two point one million dollars in necessary facility investments. They do also include the, uh, what the city manager mentioned in terms of, um, forty million dollar allocation for our Civic Center Legacy Project, plus a one point five million dollar allocation for our community center modernization across our community center assets, and an additional two hundred and five thousand for our Highlands SPD substation design to be appropriated. Um, for the full six-year, um, SPOSS seven implementation plan, I want to refer you to page three forty in the budget book just to ensure that, you know, you have recollection of all that SPOSS seven, um, appropriated for, um, our municipality. Now, these SPOSS seven tier five proceeds do allow us to sustain our credit rating that, that David mentioned earlier, and in anticipation for bond issuances and avoid, and allow us to avoid the burden of debt service over the next twenty years, in which in turn helps us to sustain the lower property tax rate that we're proposing in the plan at eleven point seven four nine mils. Okay? And last but not least, I would be remiss, as the budget director, if I didn't recognize also that when we're proposing a five-year capital plan and substantial, substantial, um, capital investments, we also need to be mindful of our operating budget impacts as we bring on new public facilities. We want to make sure that we are able to sustain the maintenance requirement and, uh, to address that ongoing. There were some comments that came up during the budget retreat work session as well. And so, those are also an accompanying, um, allocation that would be born in the operating budget alongside our capital plan investment need. As we are significantly increasing our annual capital plan investment to bring on these much-needed capital assets, we will also be coupling that from year to year into the future in terms of how do we address that deferred maintenance and ensure that we're meeting Savannah GPS while keeping our, uh, mileage rate low. I will also say that the, um, realistic implementation in terms of the capacity of bringing on additional capital projects, these projects are not projects that can be done in a twelve-month annuum, with, that speaks to the fact that we still have two hundred and eighty active projects that are work in progress. We will be continuing to add more to that. And so, again, as we go through the operating year, staff will be reporting back on what our project progress is, um, as we continue to move forward. Um, for those that are seeking, uh, that are seeking information on those active projects, the current status of those projects, we do have a capital, um, capital site. Um, the URL is on the screen for those that are interested in getting any updates on progress for those two hundred and eighty active sites. And definitely, of course, those that are being planned for twenty-six through thirty can be accessed through the savannahga.gov forward slash budget URL. And any citizens can submit inquiries on anything that we've heard through the budget retreat work session and also to date, or through our budget book, um, itself, to Budget QA at savannahga.gov. Um, we are still running that frequently, and we're monitoring that on a daily basis all the way up through budget adoption. I hope that this, um, helps to provide, uh, not only the City, City Council, but the public, a little bit more information about the City of Savannah proposed budget. Um, and that concludes our budget work session, City Manager.
Thank you so much, Melissa. All right, so, questions on the capital budget or any council direction that...
Well, did you want to, um, move a little further, or we're at the decision points now?
So, that's, that, that concludes our presentations on the bu- budget. I think, you know, if there's questions specific of the capital budget or any council direction that, uh, we have, um, in addition to what we've already heard.
Well, I think we, we've been maintaining the, the parking lot pretty well. Um, and so, I think council's had the opportunity. Again, we're, we're wanting, again, this is a continuation, so we will schedule as many sessions as you want, um, to provide the opportunity to have your questions answered. Um, hopefully, I think, you can keep, I saw it was being kept pretty well. Um, so, I don't know what council thinks.
I, I do want to ask some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
About SPOSS. You know, I'm, I'm a stickler for that. Um, and I just want to be clear on what I'm reading here. So, we've gotten four hundred and forty million dollars of SPOSS money for these projects that's listed here, right?
No, what page are you on?
I'm on page three twenty-one.
Which SPOSS, SPOSS seven?
Uh, SPOSS seven, yes.
So, SPOSS seven total across the county?
Not a county. I'm specific to the city. I don't care about the county.
I know, but that...
Not being funny or whatever, but I'm just talking about the city right now.
So, the, the, when you say the four hundred and forty million dollars...
Right, that's here.
That was what, for the, that was the IGA that was adopted in 2019. That was for countywide, including the City of Savannah. So, you can look down at this chart. Somebody can tell us how much in, uh, SPOSS seven tiers one through four, um, was allocated to the city? It's going to be roughly a little less than half of that four forty?
I have that forty, City Manager. So, the city's tier one projects, um, was one hundred and fifty-five point eight million. Um, our tier, uh, tier three projects, um, that came to the city were ten million. Um, and we have tier five projects, uh, estimated at one hundred twenty-five million.
What page are you on with that?
Um, on page three four zero. Um, tiers two and four, you notice I said city tranches were tier one, tier three, tier five. But tiers two and four were dedicated as part of the IGA to county and CETA. So, that's why they are not included on our table.
So, if you look, I'm just explaining...
Is that amount to CETA? Was that ten million dollars?
Yes, I believe so.
Oh, okay.
That was in the 2019 IGA.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, then, so that was for tiers one through four in the IGA, which totaled four hundred and forty million dollars. Tier five, which was for any revenue above four hundred and forty million dollars. Um, and the IGA in SPOSS seven identified that any, those revenues would be allocated by jurisdiction based on a prorata, um, basis of population.
Why did CETA get that ten million dollars?
Well, you'd have to go back to 2019.
Can I get that information, and somebody can tell me why that ten million dollars?
That, that was for economic development. Um, that SPOSS, that CETA needs the, they needed funds for capital opportunities. And so, that is a part of a countywide...
So, the city gave...
No, 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 no.
That, that wasn't just from the city?
This is countywide.
Countywide gave them...
That's correct.
Ten million dollars.
That's correct.
So, so the county gave, the county gave some of that ten million dollars as well? Is that what y'all telling me?
No, ma'am. So, remember how, if, let me, this summer, we passed a SPOSS eight list.
Uh-huh.
You remember that? So, we passed a SPOSS eight list that was specific for the City of Savannah, right? These were the projects that, and that was based on the amount of money that the IGA for the SPOSS seven dictates that the City of Savannah is going, is going to get, right? Um, for SPOSS eight, the same IGA was done, and this is before my time, but that IGA specifies a certain set of tier one projects, a certain set of tier two, tier three, and tier four projects. One of the tiers in that IGA specified that at a certain point, CETA would get ten million dollars of SPOSS seven funds. That was a part of an intergovernmental agreement that the, the county entered into, City of Savannah entered into, and every other municipality in Chatham County.
And the voters approved.
And, and, yes, and the voters approved. That ten million dollars did not come out of the city's portion of SPOSS seven. It didn't come out of the county's portion of SPOSS seven.
So, you're saying that the voters approved it? So, that was something that the constituents voted on?
SPOSS voted for by voters, yes.
But, oh, wait a minute. They voted for the SPOSS, but they didn't specifically vote for ten million to go to CETA?
When you vote for SPOSS...
Is that what you're saying?
No, when you vote for SPOSS, you vote for everything in SPOSS. For the city's portion, the county's portion, the city's portion...
But did the constituency know?
Yes, it's a part of the IGA, IGA, yes.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking. Okay.
It is all public...
Was there a list...
Yes, ma'am.
Published for...
Yes, ma'am.
I want to see that list.
All right, it's public record.
Okay.
It's specifically stated on the ballot.
It is on the ballot, correct.
And that was going in, that vote was taken in November of 2019.
Right, but, but my question is, did it specifically say that ten million dollars of SPOSS was going to CETA?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I need to see that. I didn't see that.
You should vote, I mean, it's your election time, so hopefully you vote for it.
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, that was a long time ago. You said 2019. A lot done happened in between then and now. I want to see it, and I'm sure that the constituents want to see it as well.
You can certainly pull that IGA. It'll be, it'll be on, it'll be in the form already.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay.
Because I'm going to have more questions after I look at this.
Okay.
But not today.
Yes, ma'am.
So, anything else from council? Uh, again, my, my goal, my role is we hope to have first reading, uh, today. Um, and hopefully to have this hammered out by December, legally by the end of December. We have to have it done. Again, I'm committed to as many sessions as long as you want to. To have, and the city manager's committed to making sure his staff is available to address any issues you have, um, or need more understanding. Additionally, the city manager's committed, himself and staff, are available individually to answer questions, issues, and things like that. So, um, I know some people are angry. But, you know, we can, we can, we can get the food and come back in here and keep on hammering, but I'm not hearing that there's anything else. So, we can, we can recess.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I think, Mr. Mayor, it might be a good idea if we all recess, grab something to eat, and allow staff members and everybody to kind of take a quick break.
Well, I mean, I would hope so, but again, I want to make sure this clock is ticking, so... Um, what I will do is, uh, I'll get with the city manager, we'll caucus, we'll be back in contact with you all about any additional sessions. If y'all feel like y'all need it, y'all can tell me individually, and we'll, we'll set something up, okay? All right, so then, we stand and recess in two, two P. F.
No, no, sir. No, no, sir. I need, we need to do, we got to come back and do our, uh, stormwater...
Well, that's what I was asking before. Did you want to go do it now?
I want to hear them first, though, because it's been years.
So, I think what, I think what Alderman Perthee mentioned was that the, there's, there's lunch. It's box lunch, Chick-fil-A, yay. Um, so, we can, we can go up, grab lunch, come back down here. I think if we can get through the utility discussion, I'd like to at least update council on one of our housing tools discussion, because it's on the agenda today. Um, if we can get through that in, um, an hour and a half, that would be great.
Okay, y'all good? Yes, yes, sir.
Counting a question, please.
A question. How long will the utility, um, presentation be?
The, the presentation itself is probably twenty minutes, and then the Q and A is however long.
Three hours.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. Listen, I hate to continue to keep our citizens waiting. They've been here since we came, nine o'clock. We got citizens here, the, the, uh, Citizens Committee, yeah.
Okay, um...
Offer a lunch.
Well, I mean, yeah.
And how implement, I spoke here.
We'll get the food, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, so maybe ten minutes to grab food and...
Is it enough for the citizens?
Yeah, we got to eat it by the damn clock.
Yeah, let's do fifteen minutes, Charlie.
Yeah, come on.
All right, okay, we said fifteen minutes.
We get a little wild.
Mr. Manager, we are just waiting for I come log in at computers.
I know it's a long shot.
Okay, all right, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene.
Yeah.
I mean, we just got back from Salt Lake City, it wasn't as cold there as it is here now.
It's in this room, that's right, it's freezing in here.
But that's good, that knows in the hot summer days, that means that we're gonna be good.
Well, how we gonna know what it's gonna do in the cold winter days?
So now we would demonstrate the heat. Say, should I show them the heat now?
Okay.
Heat miser and cold miser, let's show them the heat.
I got it.
All right, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you all for the quick break. Um, we've been talking about, um, the feasibility of a stormwater utility for several years. Um, this year, we've gone through a very extensive public engagement process. I'll note that when we began our, uh, budget retreat last Monday, the number one issue our residents, um, uh, gave us as a priority for investment was stormwater, um, on our budget survey. Um, and this stormwater utility is a way in which, um, other jurisdictions in the state have been able to, um, manage investments in revenue to be able to pay for that third pipe in the ground, which is our stormwater.
Oh, thanks.
So Ron is going to walk us through, um, where we are in the stormwater utility, um, study, as well as what our proposed rates would be for the stormwater utility. I'll remind council, council already voted to adopt an enterprise fund, uh, that set up the enterprise program. Um, on council's agenda today for a first reading, um, is a, um, a specific breakout of the revenue ordinance, which would set rates for a proposed stormwater utility. Uh, so, uh, Ron is gonna walk us through, um, the specifics of that utility and the rate study. And I believe, um, Bates is going to update council, um, on some legal matters concerning stormwater utilities, um, in the state of Georgia as well. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, good afternoon, everyone. I've given you an agenda, and I believe Stephen Maxwell has provided you a handout. Uh, feel free to refer to the bottom of the agenda for those pesky acronyms and definitions that we all use at the podium here, uh, as we go through it. Real quickly, a stormwater fee, a stormwater utility, a stormwater utility fee is gonna be used interchangeably, but the city manager just described what we've already done is to set up the utility. Now we're talking about, uh, potentially moving forward with the fee. Uh, I have some people here with me, Zach Hoffman, obviously stormwater, and we have two very special guests. Kim Dubois, Laureen Bowles, please, uh, acknowledge, uh, thank you so much for your, uh, time on the focus group.
Yes.
And, uh, they, they were, uh, part of our group of nine and did a wonderful job committing their time and, uh, offering a lot of input and advice to us on how to put this plan together. And we've done our best to adhere to the guidance that you all gave us in those meetings. Thank you for that time, thank you for being here today.
Mr. City Manager.
To acknowledge also Mrs. Myers Oliver.
Yes.
She was here since nine o'clock this morning.
Yes, Ms. Myers was here earlier, she had a doctor's appointment.
Exactly, and she is a part of the committee, and she, she shared the report, um, with me. She was, was my choice, uh, to be on the committee, and I'm so pleased that, uh, she is doing a wonderful job, and, and thank you all so much for, for all your input from the community. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you again, and thank you to Ms. Myers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, getting ourselves started here, um, we saw this slide the other day, uh, at the budget retreat, just talked about the process that we use, the workflow for the stormwater utility project. Uh, obviously, we're working towards that fifth box about stormwater utility approval, um, and hopefully moving forward with the plan to enhance service delivery for customers within City of Savannah.
Mm-hmm.
We've talked about this as well in terms of the main operational areas of this city stormwater program, uh, the maintenance side of what we do, the regulatory compliance, and of course, the very important and expensive capital improvement program element, uh, that we, uh, are gonna talk about more in the meeting here, and Zach can answer any questions if we have any.
(inaudible).
We've talked about our data before, a lot of linear miles of pipes, canals, uh, inlets, manholes, all these, uh, components of the system need regular routine and frequent maintenance. Um, some of these components need it more often than others, but, uh, this is, this is our challenge each and every day, and especially when it rains. All right, the drainage cap improvement program, very important part of what we do. Uh, this is how we go about reducing flooding and improving the quality of life in our neighborhoods. Uh, I've got a lot of detail on the slide, but I think, um, you know, we've talked about a lot of the different types of projects that we have. Uh, we're gonna talk a little bit later about how we propose to fund these in the future, beyond what we're already currently doing, but I'll say that the identified need, $465 million, the funding that already has been identified or earmarked for the program is $165 million. And I think we shared with you back in, uh, late October, uh, that, uh, we were submitting for a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, there's one of those acronyms, on the 31st of October, we requested $262 million of funding from the state of Georgia, uh, and that was another meeting that city manager went to a couple weeks ago, uh, with GEMA, uh, after they went to JIFA, so the Georgia Emergency Management Agency is the sponsor essentially for this grant opportunity, and, and we're actively working with them even this morning with some emails about our pre-applications that went in. Uh, large program, we need to have a lot of, uh, sources of revenue and funding in order to, to get these projects done. We wanted to let you know that we're pursuing every, uh, potential opportunity that we can, uh, to tackle these projects. Sploß aid, there's one of the ways that we get things done. $60 million, uh, a little more than that actually, for these projects that you all are familiar with from the project list in late July that was finalized, uh, and now is, uh, funded through Sploß aid. And, uh, Zach and his team are already starting to put together some preliminary planning work on getting these projects moving forward, uh, as we put the Sploß dollars to work. So a big thanks to the voters and a thanks to the city council.
We need to put our hands together for our voters. Yes.
And thank you to the city council for identifying these projects and working with us, uh, to put these into the, into the referendum. City manager talked about our three pipe systems, in terms of how the current utility system operates. The water and sewer utility and water and sewer fees, uh, those would be recurring themes today, provide the funding for the operations, capital and regulatory side of what we do in water and sewer. Stormwater, uh, at this time, does not have a comparable dedicated funding source to operate, uh, its, uh, functional components, uh, but that's what we're gonna talk about more here in a minute, uh, with regard to the stormwater utility program. So, a lot of discussion was had with, uh, the community, the focus group, the city council, internally with staff. What do we currently do in service delivery? A lot of, uh, reactive maintenance, um, not as robust of a capital pro- program as we would like, especially for smaller non-Sploß projects, uh, and we do some master planning, but we need to do more. So what the community and the feedback we got was enhancing service delivery as it relates to being more proactive with maintenance, being more comprehensive with maintenance, more, uh, more, uh, projects on the capital side being implemented, uh, through additional revenue, uh, getting that dedicated revenue source, uh, similar to what water and sewer has historically had, and then of course, doing a real good job of planning our work, because that's really important in the drainage world, to, to properly plan your work to ensure that you're addressing the problems and not moving into another part of the drainage system. How do we get that done? General fund plus Sploß plus stormwater fees, uh, is gonna move us from a reactive stormwater management program to something that's more proactive, and I know we've talked about ditch maintenance in a proactive way in the last few months, that's the kind of service model that we wanna, uh, keep in, in place going forward. The stormwater utility concept, uh, once again, it's like water and sewer and sanitation. Uh, it's a utility system with the revenues dedicated to stormwater services, just as water and sewer revenue is dedicated to water and sewer operations. Uh, and, and the difference is that we base the customer's bill on the amount of stormwater runoff in terms of the impervious area for the property, as opposed to its consumption through a meter, like water. And it applies to all developed properties that generate stormwater runoff. So if you're contributing runoff to the system, uh, you are then subject to a bill, uh, proportional to that amount of runoff. Uh, in summary, it's a more equitable way to fund stormwater management than other ways it's done, sales tax, property tax, things of that nature. So the stormwater fee billing unit, we actually have a billing unit in water, it's 300 gallons per day, uh, that goes through your water meter, we have a similar billing unit for stormwater that we're defining here as an equivalent residential unit, that's 2,500 square feet. So we're utilizing a similar approach in terms of the ERU concept that we've been using in water for years, in terms of gallons per day, and now we're applying it to square feet in the case of stormwater fees, uh, and, and, and the rate structure we're referring to here. So you really got two customer classes, um, you've got your traditional single-family residential, and then you've got your non-residential, which is everything, uh, that's not your traditional detached single-family dwelling in terms of commercial, industrial, institutional, multifamily, anything that's not your traditional residential gets class- classified in the non-single-family residential, uh, bucket, so to speak. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the tiers that are in place for, um, the residential side, uh, of the, of the rate structure, and this gets to the question that came up earlier about the size of your trash bag. Well, in the case of stormwater residential fees, a smaller house is gonna pay a smaller monthly fee than a larger house would be because the impervious footprint is smaller. I'm gonna show you a table on that in a second. And in the case of the non-single-family or the commercial industrial properties, it's a distinct or custom bill based on the amount of impervious you have, and I'm gonna show you that calculation here in a minute, and I think it'll be pretty straightforward to follow how non-single-family is done. So, a lot of stormwater utilities in Georgia and across the country use a flat rate for all customers. Garden City has a single rate for all residential properties in terms of, uh, single-family dwellings. In this case, we've divided it into four tiers because the nature of our impervious footprint for our properties warrant- footprint for our properties warrants this kind of equitable breakdown so that a smaller house on the west side or maybe in the Victorian district is going to pay maybe in that first tier, whereas a ranch in Ardsley might pay in tier two or three. So in this case, it is, the fee is proportional to the size of the impervious footprint on the lot, even down to the residential customer base. I've highlighted the one ERU 475 rate because we're going to carry that forward here in a minute to the non-residential calculation. So we're back to the billing unit, 2,500 square feet, just like 300 gallons per day for a resident. The billing rate is 475 from that tier two, and the non-single-family customer has their total impervious area in square feet divided by the ERU 2,500 to get the number of ERUs or billing units, and then the calculation of the fee is shown here. The example is parking lot and roof, 30,000 square feet divided by 2,500 square feet, the typical residential ERU, 12 billing units. 12 billing units times the rate, $4.75, gives you $57 a month. So that's the distinct or custom nature of the non-residential bill calculation. So once again, flat rates here based on those tiers, and then custom bills based on the calculation there for non-residential customers. So this is how we're treating similar customers in a similar way in terms of how their bill is being generated. Here's an example of other customer bills that are actually properties within the city. The single-family residential tier two, 1.0 units, 475, and then there's always a ratio based on the residential in terms of the billing units based on the amount of impervious area. So there's 15 times the amount of impervious area on the fast-food residential site, so the bill is $72 as opposed to 475. The warehouse is 500 times a residential property, so the bill is 500 times. So you can see how the proportionality of the different impervious footprints to the designated residential 1.0 2,500 unit is applied, and that's what that language on the right says. And once again, this is before credits have been applied, so let's move to credits next. One unique aspect of a stormwater fee is that it offers credits to customers that implement eligible activities that reduce the impact that the customer's stormwater runoff has on the city drainage system. So this is an incentive for customers to manage stormwater in various ways on their property in order to reduce their stormwater runoff impacts to the public drainage system and then in turn reduce their bill. So this is one way that a customer can reduce their bill, and that top example would be a warehouse detention pond, which could be worth maybe as much as a 50% reduction on their bill because of how they're mitigating their onsite impacts from stormwater runoff. We've got a full credit manual that is in the city council Tuesday night memo that's all part of the package at the end, or actually, no, that's on, I'm sorry, that's on the agenda item for the stormwater rate ordinance. Exhibit three actually had the stormwater utility credit manual. It's also on the website as well. So the credit manual is a real important tool and mechanism for the customer base to understand because residential customers and non-residential customers would be eligible for certain credits. The billing side of this is very straightforward in that if the city council were to approve the stormwater utility rate ordinance on December 11th, then the mechanism as it's proposed is for those fees to go out into the existing bi-monthly utility bills, obviously moving to hopefully a monthly bill in the future. Any property such as a parking lot that has no structures would get a bill, they would just get a stormwater only bill because a parking lot obviously wouldn't have a water and sewer account. The stormwater bills would reflect the credits that would be applied through the credit manual process. The fee would be the same every month unless you added impervious area, expanded your parking lot, or you built a stormwater detention facility and you got a credit for that. But otherwise, it's a static fee similar to sanitation. Stormwater revenues are deposited into the enterprise fund that the city manager talked about that was set up previously, and they can only be used for stormwater services. Customer assistance in terms of outreach and credit applications would begin in January of 2026, such that the first billing cycle mid-year 2026 could be implemented with those credits in place for customers that sought them. Coming towards the end here, so bear with me a couple more slides. Here is how that different type of revenue or revenue source would be applied to those different operational areas of the program, maintenance, regulatory, and capital improvements. And you can see that stormwater utility fees provide a lot of flexibility and that they're not restricted to any one of the functional components of the stormwater program, whereas when you start to get out to SPOS on the right-hand side of the chart, SPOS can only be used for capital projects, and it's a really important component, but it can't be used for maintenance. So just a little bit of insight here in terms of the flexibility of the different revenue sources that we're talking about utilizing to fund the overall program going forward. This shows some of the supplemental revenues that have been provided to the stormwater department over the years. Some of those larger light blue areas where supplemental funding was provided on top of the annual operating was when we didn't roll back the millage. The stormwater department was fortunate enough to get some of that captured revenue, but it is a little bit inconsistent, and obviously was associated with a tax increase in at least '22 and '24. So we're trying to get more out to the '26, '27 where stormwater fees and the light green are a more consistent annual revenue stream year over year to allow us to implement projects and programs that the community is desiring us to focus on. Little bit of a deep dive on the capital program, once again showing how the different sources of funding would pay for the different types of projects. Call your attention to neighborhood construction projects. We've got a lot of those smaller projects in the neighborhoods that aren't large enough to be part of SPOS, and maybe there isn't enough supplemental tax money to fund them. So we want to target those neighborhood projects with an annual appropriation of stormwater utility funds so we can handle those small neighborhood projects which are highly visible and in some cases very impactful to different residents in their community. We're always going to need SPOS, federal grants, so hopefully going to play a big role on the large projects there on the far right. So some of the key takeaways, we've talked about all these things, this is almost a summary slide, the customer fairness issue, the more impervious area and runoff you have, the higher your fee, obviously different than property tax. Stormwater fee revenue only used for drainage purposes, that revenue consistency is going to make us more effective, and we're transitioning the program through this proposal from reactive to more proactive such that we have an improved customer service experience as a result of implementation of this plan. The city council request is summarized there. That essentially is the stormwater utility rate ordinance, standing up the fee system within the existing enterprise fund, establishing the rate for both residential and non-residential, the credit manual, we talked about that, commencement of billing, the 1st of July, the customer service delivery plan that we've talked about, enhanced maintenance, more capital, implementing that and then supporting ongoing customer engagement and education into 2026 and of course beyond. Last two slides, Georgia stormwater utility background. The first utility was Griffin, Georgia in 1998. I didn't set it up, but I was working on it when it got implemented, when the revenue started coming in in '99. So I've been around utilities for about 25 years. Worked on some of those that are on the next slide, 70-plus in the state of Georgia. I had a role in setting up Garden City and Albany. So those are some utilities that I've personally been involved with. I think this is the 15th time I've had the opportunity to bring a rate ordinance in front of an elected group of officials. So it's something that I really believe in in terms of its ability to improve the community's drainage system, and by using the process that has been established in Georgia over those last 25 years, I feel like we've got a good proposal to put in front of you, and the technical and financial matters that are a part of that, we try to be real attentive to detail. The last part of this is the legal side of it, and I'll let Bates handle that to complement our technical and financial analysis here.
You want to ask questions of him now or you?
Let me just, that's why I'm making a comment. I think for us, I want to thank council, certainly the staff, a lot of work has gone into this. A whole lot of work has gone into this. We don't want to kick the can down the road. We have to do something more significant, more ongoing, more dedicated, and more specific, and this helps us to be able to get there. The second thing I'm really glad about, and I think we're on the right track, is that from our strategic plan and from our citizen engagement, from council engagement, you know, all of us are talking the same thing. And so this is a direct answer to what it appears is the prevailing issue among us, and probably the hardest. And the third thing I think is, and I hope that the city attorney, if we're able to say at the time, is going to be nice to us, but there's a difference between a fee and a tax. And the thing about taxes is that there are some folks, some entities, that are exempt from paying taxes. We pay for it through the general fund, right? I mean, you know, we would have to levy a tax, but fees, everybody pays their fair share, whatever that is, and I think that helps us to achieve a more universal. Uh-oh.
Look more than Amber Alert.
Amber Alert in Rex, Georgia.
A Rex.
I don't know where that is.
But, you know, it's much more universal, it's fair, because obviously if it's a tax, we do it through a millage rate, then some people just won't get away without paying. So I just wanted to put that out there, again, Mr. Manager, Ron, thank you, or Zach, I mean, this was a lot of work, and I've really been very impressed with the engagement. You know, they've gotten out there in these districts in front of these neighbors and said, give me what you got, and some good questions that we've received. And one of the questions I've heard over and over again as well, why now? And it's just now is the right time. Look, County just did it, what, five days ago? So, you know, hey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to echo the mayor's sentiments. I've yet to see, this may be the most thoroughly vetted initiative that we've seen on council, the extraordinarily deliberate, the involvement of a citizen advisory committee, and thank you guys for your service. Thank you. Identifying the needs in a workshop that defined it down to a number and the investment that we need to get residents out of a 100-year flood, ample opportunities to get involved, and I wanted to commend the entire team, and specifically Ron. We had an engagement event at Eckberg Auditorium at Savannah Tech, and all the king's horses and all the king's band were there, right? We set the table, and extraordinary outreach and engagement and advertising, and we had two residents that came to join us.
It was cold that night.
In any lesser situation, maybe we would have changed gears and said, we'll talk amongst yourselves, go to the different stations, but Ron personally delivered the entire presentation himself to that table as if he had a full audience of 250 people there. And that's the level of care that you brought throughout the entire process to get everyone on board, to make sure that it's well-understood, well-vetted, well-reasoned, an equitable approach that exceeds even our peers of other cities. To have a tiered system for residences, and the fee is based on impervious surfaces, it makes sense. Our city hasn't faced a direct hit from a tropical system since before they were named, but we can't pray this away. Now's the time to make an investment, and although SPOS did extraordinary things and does, those are great down payments on the mortgage. Somebody's still got to make the rest of the payments on the house. For Midtown, we've invested, you know, $20 million in the Casey Canal project, I think that's about 20% of what we need, and I don't know if we can afford to wait another 30 years for SPOS to catch up with us. I know that I don't. So I just want to commend you and the team. You guys are doing a great job, and thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend the city manager and Mr. Felner for a very, very well-executed plan for our community outreach. I want to thank you all for including the entire city of Savannah, all of our districts, and even more greater in my area because I have the largest landmass district in the city of Savannah, and with the continuous annexations that are good and well-thought-out new development plans and subdivisions out in the west of Savannah, your team came all the way out to the ends of the borders of the city of Savannah and brought the whole team out, and there were about two residents there, but still, like you said, Alderman Palumbo, that you all stayed there, you were ready to put on the whole entire segment of the engagement even out there. So I just wanted to mention that, and just the whole process, the hands-on, the sessions, the moving around from one room to the next room, and explaining to our citizens, because in other parts of my district, you all came besides that one area, and some of the other parts in my district were full engagement in the room and in the space. So it was just a good exercise for our city that you all did, and I've got to say, it was one of the most, one of the most well-organized and community engagements that I've seen in the city. So thank you all so much for just explaining to our citizens and taking the time. You all took the time to get it done. Thank you.
Also, I'm echoing the comments made by Palumbo and Dr. Shabans. I want to thank the city manager and Ron though because you listened, not that you always don't, but you did listen to us about 10 months ago perhaps when all, I guess it was, I don't know when it was, it was at an NLC conference, we were able to talk to, sometime we talked to colleagues in other cities about what they're doing, with their problems, or how they're addressing problems, but we were able to talk to Lara Hansen, and we talked about what we were contemplating in Savannah as it relates to addressing stormwater needs, and he told us about what they'd done about Austin. So we came back and shared that, and namely engaging the citizens upfront, and he said that seems to work when citizens have a voice and citizens are involved in the process, understand why the city is doing what they're doing, why they're recommending, before you get to the point where you're asking for money or asking to pay a fee, although it's not a tax, but even to pay any amount of money, if they're involved in why it's needed and the process, it, you know, it's easier for them to explain to other citizens. So when we came back talking about that, you guys listened and said, okay, not, I'm sure the city manager probably already had that in his toolbox, but anyway.
No, thank you.
Anyway, Ron has told me, he kept telling me during the process, the citizens are engaged, the citizens are helping us work through this process, and he was very pleased with the involvement of the citizens. So thank you to the citizens, but thank you also to the management team for listening.
You hope this group was a tremendous asset to us, so thank you all for appointing those members.
Sorry, Alderman, Brian.
Mr. Felner, we appreciate this and your staff. Thank you so much for the engagement. But like all of the programs that we have, the strategic plans don't work if they're not implemented, right? And so we're just confident that it's going to roll out the way that it's supposed to. Most of all of the districts are saying the same thing. You can lead a horse to the trough, but you can't make him drink. We keep giving out this information that's really good about the specific things that we want to do with the stormwater. It's now going to be an enterprise, and so I'm just asking, I know that everything was worked and well out. I believe that after it's rolled out in July, we're going to have a lot of questions from our people who did. I believe that after it's rolled out in July, we're going to have a lot of questions from our people who did not come for whatever reason. But we've got to keep giving them this information. Can you give us a shorter version after the rollout in the communities or the districts to say basically what's going to come about and how it's going to come about? I think that would close the gap for people who missed that first chance, to see how it's actually going to work and how it affected them and their water bill moving forward. The other thing is, water services is going to be coming under your supervision. Are our citizens still going to be playing at the same place? Or have the logistics, are they going to change where they actually pay?
Initially, they're going to continue to operate out of the same facility. But as the Adams complex expands, I believe the plan is to move those customer service people, or some of them, over to where we're going to be building the second Adams building.
So.
Recall, the Coastal Georgia Center is not owned by the city of Savannah.
Oh, yes, sir. We've been talking about that for a while. And so I offer in these other, we go to NLC and GMA, a lot of people are paying their water bills inside of grocery stores. We can actually pay our taxes in there. Would you think about incorporating that, sir?
You just barely get your driver's license at Kroger.
Yes, sir, all of that. And so we want to not reinvent the wheel. We want to keep that wheel free so that our people who had a problem going to that site will not have the same problem going to Adams. It's kind of off the beaten trail.
Exactly.
Yeah. And so if we can identify the customer service aspects of our people who don't have transportation, and in light of this cat situation thing, we want to make sure that we offer an easier way to pay our bills for anybody. And thank you for what you do. Thank you for that.
Thank you. We've got a plan for the first six months of next year to engage with the customers further, including a postcard in the first quarter that will tell them what their bill's going to be.
Yes, sir.
That'll generate questions.
Okay, so I tried to try to do the formula, 300 gallons a day. And the formula for the stormwater is going to be 250 square feet.
2,500 square feet.
Yeah, and so that equates to how many gallons? Just want to know. I was going to figure it out. You can come back and tell me that.
Every property's different. We'd have to look at that and let you know how many gallons of water comes off the 2,500 square foot.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
It also depends on how much trains.
But that's what I was talking, that's what the stormwater is for, the rainwater and the snow. I get that part. That's what I wanted to get.
And saturation, too.
Yeah, saturation. Yeah, just as a point of curiosity. Thank you so much. It was really interesting. I just wish that, Mr. Shearow, when we get ready to do these amazing programs, that we can filter them out so people actually know what we're doing. So we won't have to say we're doing this and we're doing that. But because of our, what is it, marketing stuff, people actually get to know and understand what we're actually, the services that we're giving them. Thank you so much. It was really thought out, a good plan. And they were amazing, the other lady. Thank you so much. Sincerely, appreciate it.
I'll go over there.
Thank you for your presentation. It was really good. You said you've worked with another division that implemented a fee?
I've actually worked with 14.
And so have you had an opportunity to observe the impact of the fee? How long have you been with the longest one?
I put it in Fayetteville in 2003.
Okay.
I'll tell you my story on that. Whenever we'd go to GMA in the annual meeting in the summer, and I would see all the elected officials and staff members in those communities. I was now city manager at Garden City, so I wasn't in the consulting business anymore. But I would still see them, and we would still talk. And they would say, "The stormwater program's going great, da-da-da-da-da. The community likes that we've got these additional resources in there to tackle maintenance and capital." So usually those interactions, five and 10 years later, were always very positive at GMA with those people that. We had that experience together to set it up and get those resources to the community. And five and 10 years later, it was still something that was very positive in the community for getting issues addressed.
I really see this as being a great tool, the possibility of being a really good tool for a community. And I struggled with this because I understand that this is a good tool, and it could really work and impact our drainage system here. Then based on the area that I represent, having so many marginalized and low-income people, it's very difficult to support a fee. Because we know the definition of being underserved and marginalized is that you really didn't get what you were paying for all along. So these people have been underserved and not getting their drainage service or infrastructure from the beginning, from the inception. So to tell folks who were having these types of issues to recommend that we vote for a drainage fee, I was struggling with that. However, you all did a really good job in implementing the new strategic line on engagement. And I think we were at Coastal Georgia Center, we had a decent turnout.
You let some into discussions for us.
Yeah.
It was great.
But, so, Ms. Boles, thank you for participating. And we had an opportunity to have two people on the focus group because Alderman Lankley was out with her travesty, losing her husband. And she couldn't pay attention to this. So I got an opportunity to recommend another person. We were waiting on that last recommendation. So from the first district, we have the president of Woodville. In that area, they have been suffering severely from drainage issues. And she's very vocal about it. And I knew she was going to be a thorn in y'all's side.
She's very smart, too.
She is. So I recommended her to come in to poke at you guys. And then had an opportunity to recommend the person, who's the brightest person in our district, on stormwater drainage. She has some 30-year history of working in stormwater. She's an engineer. So I had two people on there that could really analyze what you were presenting and come away with a really good recommendation. And the team, the two from the first, came away with a very positive recommendation. And so it's really not the moral of you voting on this based on what's right and wrong or morally right. But the process is really was convincing you to do support. Because, you know, I can't vote necessarily how I want. So I heard you all did a good job in allowing us to sort of ask your team and the community how they want it to be laid on purpose. So thank you for that. That's it.
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor.
Question. Who is going to determine who gets the service first from this fee? How are you all going to determine what area needs the service?
Well, there's two big service components. So I'll start with capital projects. Through the process, as our focus group knows, and they strongly advocated for, they wanted a ranking system that was kind of a matrix. That is, we had capital projects go on Zach's list, and there's got to be 50 or so projects, maybe 60, 70 on the list, that he has ranked every one of those projects in terms of their susceptibility to flooding, impact to structures, roadways, interconnection with other drainage systems, so we don't cause a problem upstream, downstream. And he's got a full scoring matrix of all the capital projects. So now we can go to that list and systematically use that ranking matrix to implement capital projects in the most kind of objective way possible. And that was an important point, that if we're going to have this money through the fee system in the program, we can't just decide unilaterally in stormwater departments where we're going to use that money. So that's how the capital projects are going to be done. And we think that ranking system is going to be a good tool to implement those projects. The second issue on the maintenance side, dividing the city up into, I think, six different zones, assigning those back trucks that we're talking about, the existing ones we have, the new ones we're going to buy, and then those ditch crews, getting those maintenance zones set up so that there's a more frequent routine and kind of disciplined maintenance program by district or, I don't want to say the council districts, they're more kind of watershed districts. But they're broken up into zones. And that's how we're going to try and focus the different types of equipment and resources in those zones to get a better maintenance product for the customer.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, I asked you these questions before, and I'm going to ask you again. Our SPOS surplus monies, you said we cannot use this, use those funds for this type of project, correct?
We can use SPOS for capital projects. And capital projects that are in line with projects that voters approved on that specific referendum for that SPOS series. We cannot use SPOS or any interest gain from SPOS on operations and maintenance. So when we talk about investments into a new back truck and a back truck crew, that's operations and maintenance. When we talk about increased staffing or contract capacity to better clean the ditches and canals, that's operations and maintenance, and it's not an allowable SPOS expense. What we can use SPOS on, and what we do use SPOS for, are those large capital projects. So in SPOS state that the voters just approved, we've got a lot of money additional to the Springfield Canal, capital improvements that are needed for the Springfield Canal and Springfield Basin, for the Casey Canal, and for other specific projects that are up on the screen here today. I think that what, so those are what the SPOS programs can pay for.
So Mr. City Attorney, he just said we cannot use the surplus money from SPOS on this type of thing. Is that the case?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, I would like to get the verbiage on that, please. The policy and the law. Thank you.
Let me, let's go ahead. The city attorney needs to brief us, and this is indeed a unique and rare treat. So we need to take advantage of it before he tries to get out of it. This is his update.
Okay, Bates Levitt City Attorney. You know, it's going to be fun when I move the podium. So I'm not here to rain on this parade, because it's clearly a parade. But I'm here to warn you that there are storms in the area. And it's not all wonderful news. So as y'all know, Ron, Zach, Anthony, a little bit, I'm kidding, have been working on this for years. That y'all have been part of the engagement. There's been a focus group. Y'all have been part of the focus group. Y'all have been part of the engagement. Forty-one days ago, the Georgia Supreme Court issued a new opinion on this subject matter. And it was a case out of Athens-Clark County. This case originally appeared before the Georgia Supreme Court in 2013. There's a group called Homewood. And they sued Athens-Clark County saying that stormwater fees like this one were not legal. Now, in Georgia, we can charge people for things. We can. We can charge fees, and we can charge taxes. But no matter what we call it, it has to fit in the parameters of what the law defines as a fee or as a tax. Okay? And this group in Athens-Clark County made the argument that the stormwater fee was not a fee, it was a tax. And they lost that case in 2013. So all good. Everybody continues to pass these stormwater fees. So they brought this lawsuit again recently. And they ended up again in front of the Georgia Supreme Court, who issued their opinion again on October 15th this year, 41 days ago. The Georgia Supreme Court, in good news, said that stormwater fee in Athens-Clark County is legally permissible. It's a 51-page order. I'm going to get you a copy of it.
That's all right.
Well, I'm also going to write you a memo about it, too.
The memo would be great.
You got you.
Yeah, but there are two memos coming. So, and those are going to be legally protected. Okay, so the Georgia Supreme Court again said that Athens-Clark County's stormwater fee was legal. Now, the problem is, and where the storm is, is that the reason why they said it was legal is because there's a concept in the law called stare decisis. It says, "Hey, if we've already decided this issue for these parties, we're not going to go back and change the law for these particular parties." But a couple of justices on that Supreme Court, the Chief Justice Patterson and Justice Charlie Bethel, wrote a concurring opinion that said, "Hey, we approve Athens-Clark County's stormwater fee because we've already proved it before. But there are, quote, 'some' on this court that question whether or not it was the right decision the first time around." And the rest of y'all that have these stormwater fees and are looking to pass these stormwater fees, you need to do so mindful of our concerns that a stormwater fee is actually a tax, and it's not a fee. Now, a fee is a charge for a specific property that brings benefit to that property. For example, you've got an empty lot on, let's say, 37th Street, and you want to build a home on that empty lot. We can charge that home builder a fee to tap into our water and sewer lines so that that house can receive the benefit of our water and sewer. That's a specific act for that lot specifically that brings specific benefit to that homeowner. On the other end of the spectrum, you have taxes. Kind of fundamentally, we exist as a city of Savannah to combine resources to do things for the general good. I, Bates Levitt, can't pay for the repurposing of Bay Street, or repaving of Bay Street. So we combine all our money through taxes, and we do things like provide fire protection. We do things like provide police protection, sanitation, repaving of streets. The question is whether or not this stormwater utility fee is for the greater good of all or is it individual for the specific piece of property? There are four factors, and I'm going to get you all this information. Purpose, benefit, mandatory nature, and relationship to the burden. Okay? So if a court determines that this stormwater fee is mandatory and it's for the benefit of all, then it is a tax and should be treated as a tax. It should be included within the military. If it is, again, and if it's a tax, even though the law currently says you can do all of these things where you make impervious and you charge based upon the size of the building, those types of things, if it's a tax, you can't do that. You must charge taxes based upon ad valorem, meaning according to value. Okay? Look, I'm going to give some analogies, but that's my responsibility. I don't mean any negative connotations with the kind of the subject matter I'm talking about. I'm looking through this only in the lens of law. Okay? That's my job. I'm only, I don't look at the politics of it. I don't look at whether it was a good or bad decision. I look at only through the lens of the law. Okay? Look at the county's fire fee. Okay? The county passed this fire fee in an attempt to not have to incur that cost through military. Whether or not their intentions were good or bad, and whether or not they wanted those that are exempt to pay their fair share, that's not what the law allows for. Even though, again, they could have the best intentions of the world, it wasn't a legal fee, it was a tax. And now they have a $30 million verdict out there. They've got to pay. Right now, it's going up with Court of Appeals, and we're going to watch it intently, I promise. But right now, there is a judgment on the books against Chatham County for $30 million that they have to repay, and they're accruing interest every single day. So the point of my existence here today is to tell you all about risk. Okay? That's my job. I have to be your eyes on this subject because you're not reading Georgia Supreme Court opinions. Although Ron, where's Ron? Ron sent it to me before I even saw it. I mean, so staff was waiting for it, too. Staff knew that this was coming, but we didn't know what it was going to say until it came out. So it's my job to make sure that you understand the risk of these types of decisions, and you have all the facts and circumstances that you need to make the right decision. Because I don't want to be the guy that three years from now, you say, "Bates, why didn't you tell us about this risk?" Now, again, the very positive is, is that every one of these stormwater fees that has come before a court has been found to be permissible. I'm just letting you know that the Supreme Court has said, "Y'all need to be mindful. You need to watch what you're doing." And so that's what I'm telling you here today.
And you'll continue to watch it.
Absolutely.
Obviously. And then we hear some time before we actually collect. Our liability is out until we start collecting.
Correct. And that's what Jay and I have discussed this a lot. And like, one of the good things for us right now is even if you pass it right now, you're not going to collect until July. And we'll have an opportunity to monitor this, and we'll have the ability to evaluate what's going on. But I just want you all to be mindful of what's out there before you pass it.
If I could just add to that on the recommendation. So I completely agree with the city attorney's assessment of risk. I think that we've, and, you know, we can't help what the state decides. And we've got to be mindful of what's out there before you pass it.
And we gotta be mindful of what the state decides. I think we've got a lot of time to be able to better understand what this opinion means for us and to be able to avoid risk. But we have put a tremendous amount of work and community effort into this. And our recommendation is, if city council wants to vote to approve the utility and the rates, now is a good time to do it after we've done this community engagement. And we can help to manage and better understand the risk in the intervening months before we send out bill number one and accrue any liability or monetary risk. The other thing that I would like to add to that is there are 70-plus other communities in Georgia who are looking very intently at this decision as well. GMA is looking very intently at this decision as well. And I think we might learn a lot from the upcoming state assembly session as to what the state might want to do in terms of protecting those communities' ability to continue to invest in this system. So those would be the things that I would add on to the city attorney's message about how we might, our recommendation to how we might manage this risk over the next half a year, two years.
Let me just add to that. I think you concur. We're gonna add this, we should add this to our legislative agenda. And I know certainly we'll ask GMA to help us to follow and track that as well. I think I saw Odom and Nefer in the indicator.
Based on the definition you just gave us of fees, that if you could all be based on any type of setups or rain barrels or wood nets in itself?
So you have to look at, so I'm trying to use the term charge, 'cause we can charge people money. Then the courts look at, is that charge a fee or is it a tax? The court here in Chatham County found that the county's fire fee, even though they tried to call it a fee, was actually a tax. And so they look at the four factors, and even though they're good intentions of the offset, it still might be classified as a tax and not a fee. And if it is a tax, it has to be ad valorem based upon value. And so the offsets just don't affect the initial evaluation of whether or not it's a fee or a tax. And we've looked at it, and I've actually had the outside counsel look at it as well. And one of the things they say is, Bates, there's nothing better that staff could have done to draft this stormwater utility fee. There's no additional language that we can add. There's nothing more that we could do to make it better. It's just based upon what it is, is that charge a fee or is it a tax?
Mayor Johnson? Attorney Bates, is it any way possible that we could change it from a fee to a tax and allow the constituents to decide whether or not they want to pay it?
Well, it's the third rail, but you can increase the military.
If I could, and I'll give you some context on what that would mean, 'cause those are the two ways to do it, right? So right now, we pay for stormwater out of the general fund, right? But we wanna be able to further invest there. You could increase the millage in order to pay for service enhancement requests in stormwater. You could set up a special taxing district that was citywide and charge a specific mill rate specific to stormwater. That would go into a stormwater fund to be able to increase investment there. Either way, so that's gonna be ad valorem, as the city attorney said, which is based on property, based on value. So only taxable properties would be paying into that system. To give you some context, right now, a 12-month projection of revenue for what our proposed rates would give you is around $8 million. One mill for the city, one mill, mill equivalent, produces a little over $8 million in revenue this year on this tax digest. So you would be, if you wanted to get the equivalent of what we're wanting to invest in the proposed rates for utility fee, you would have to increase a millage rate by one full mill to get that same investment over 12-month period.
When you say that only taxable properties would be taxed if it was a tax, you're saying that SCAD wouldn't have to pay?
That's right.
Anything?
Yeah, SCAD is a nonprofit entity.
So no nonprofit would have to pay?
That's right. It would just be, you're essentially adding that to your property tax.
And when I look at the grid, that...
Ron?
Ron, thank you. No, 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 not that one. The one that says how much these properties would pay.
Oh, the residential table. Here.
Is that it? Yes, that's it. Uh-uh, not that one. Not residential.
Different sized sites with the different price tag.
I'm looking at the other one where, you know what I'm talking about, Anthony? Yes. Apartment complex, retail shopping center.
So if you looked at like institutional building, might be like a school or a large facility, think of a, so, you know, if you're looking at, you know, larger institutional buildings, take a look at that.
Let me ask you this. Institutional building, 25.3. So SCAD would only be paying $120.18, is that what you're saying?
So, to go, not to go back deep into Ron's presentation, but it's all based on the square footage of impervious area at a specific property. To get back to Bates's kind of concern here about, is this a value to a specific property? Which I think people who would argue in favor of a stormwater fee that it is a fee and not a tax is saying it's an actual service to that property, it's based on that property, it's based on the amount of stormwater runoff to that specific property would...
Generate.
And generate. Thank you for that word. So it's specific to your property.
So let me ask you this. Say, for instance, and I'm using SCAD, so, y'all, I'm using SCAD, okay? SCAD just built a big, beautiful building, and they're building one over on Lewisville Road. So their stormwater is not gonna settle the way it would for a property that's been there for quite a while, correct?
Well, there's, on 73 Lewisville Road, there's much more, there's much more impervious area now with that new development. So in a stormwater utility, that entity, in this case SCAD, if we're using that property as an example, would pay a rate based on the ERU equivalent of the, of how much, and we can go back to that algorithm. It's, it's right there. It's $4.75 per month, per 2,500 square feet of impervious area. So I don't know how much impervious area that site has, but we, you know, that's part of the process in the next six months. We'd be able to provide you all that information. But that's what they would be charged. They would be charged $4.75 for every 2,500 square feet of impervious area on the property. And that'd be the same for SCAD. It would be the same for a commercial warehouse. It would be the same for a big box retailer, et cetera. It's the same unit across all of them, is how we kind of make that equitable in a fee structure.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to Odom and Wabry, and then we gotta go.
So, Mr. Bates, how you doing, sir?
Great. How about you?
I'm good. And so we just want our citizens to know that the stormwater is not a tax. It's a user fee based on the formal, is that right?
Yes, ma'am. That's the position we're gonna take.
Right. And so unlike the property tax, it has to do with the millage rate, right? And that's, if the millage rate is where we want it to be, that means that our property tax is not corporate. So to not confuse the two together, people just wanna know that this user fee is gonna be based on what they use and not an additional tax.
Yes, ma'am. That's certainly the position, that's the argument. That's what other stormwater utility fees have said. Yes, ma'am.
And so a lot of times when y'all give our citizens this information, it's like, wah, wah. They just wanna know, it's a user fee, it's not a tax, and you're only gonna be billed on what you use. And that the stormwater is to maintain flooding, the maintenance of it, and to make sure we keep the quality of our water.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's what we wanna hear, and that's what we wanna convey. And thank you for taking care of that. And no, sir, I don't wanna read that other stuff. I just wanna know that you're gonna take care of us like you always do. And so a lot of times when y'all give these presentations, it confuses people. We just know it's not a tax, it's based on your usage, right? That's our position.
In my most wonderful, like, respectful voice, that's what you want me to say?
No, no, I want you to say what it is, but I wanna be able to explain it in layman's terms, and not all of these complex words where it gets lost in the transition.
And I really sincerely did my best to do that.
And you do.
It's just, I'm not, and I'm not really exactly, it's a super complicated legal issue. I mean, like I mentioned, like, the Georgia Supreme Court issued a 51-page order on this subject just 41 days ago. It is, I'm doing, I mean, I'm really, in all sincerity.
Oh, I appreciate it.
I'm doing my best to like, to make it as easy to understand as I can. But like, I can't make, I can't say those things are absolute.
No, no, they're not absolute, but I wanna be in the same ball field to when I explain this stuff. I don't have the legal ease, but I'm aware that they understand what the concept is.
You say that. Yes, ma'am. You say that.
So this is the best way for us to get to where our citizens want to be.
That's what we need.
Equitable, the best way. And I think that our position should be, is that we work and we watch. That, you know, we do what we wanna do, and we watch. And if we have to pull up, we'll just pull up. But I think we had the benefit of some gap time in order to get us where we wanna be. I think we move forward, you know, and then if we have to do something different, then we'll just do something different.
Well, let me ask you this, Mayor Johnson. Would that be based on the fact that we've already charged these people? Because you're saying that they won't be billed until July 26th. So what if something happens and it comes back?
Our liabilities only when we collect it.
So if we, if we get more clarity on how the states feel about this issue, one way or another. So if we get more clarity that the state feels that this is a tax and not a fee, then we're gonna pull up and we'll find another way. I do wanna say...
I think I got one more thing. Thanks, Bates. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Bates has always helped us to shape best policies. So he does the same.
He's a little bit buzzkill, man.
He does the same stuff with us and with y'all, and he really is invaluable. He's the best in the business. I know that y'all all thanked me before you thanked Ron, and I would say I had nothing to do with this. It's all Ron. And Ron is... And Ron is gonna tell you, he did very little of it. Anthony did the lion's share. It was a big team effort and a long, long, complicated process that I think that we really executed very well thanks to the emphasis from this council that we need to get to our community and make sure this was community-led. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Finally, I see Martin and Nita here. Y'all just wave at them. Happy to see you all. Not today.
Yes. And if you have any questions, we do have the ADU issue on the agenda today, which has been fully recommended by MPC, but we'll be able to talk about that in council.
All right. Can we, can we ready to go in five or 10?
Five.
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 Seven, seven and a half.
Thank you.
Seven and a half.